This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Right, let me call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for November 26th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. And if we could please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good. Thank you, thank you. So, we have a pretty full agenda tonight. We'll see how we can move through it pretty efficiently, I hope. Lots of guests and guest speakers tonight, so... Do we have anybody here who is for Citizen Speak that is not on the agenda? Robert?
I'm here. Robert Floyd College Highway. For years, I've been hearing people weigh in on the town meeting, meeting on an evening at 7:00 versus what we historically met with on Saturday morning. And I did some research, and it was way back in 2006. Seems like only yesterday, though. Floyd Gallery's closing, they're selling the building. Because of that, a lot of people have been coming just to weigh in, say hello. Every single one of them, whether they lived in town or not, complained about how more difficult it is for them to drive in the evening. So, I... And it was changed from a Saturday morning to a Tuesday even flippantly because somebody wanted to be available for soccer games on Saturday. And there was a lot of outcry about it back when, and it died down. So, I'm thinking out loud, I was wondering, my thoughts to the Select Board is consider maybe sharing it with the Bylaw Committee, and maybe it's time to consider changing it back to Saturday morning.
Okay.
And there would be more people coming. The benefits, we wouldn't be so rushed to end at 10:00. And if we did have to adjourn for a second evening, it would just continue, perhaps, on a Saturday. And I just think it would be beneficial for the whole town.
Okay. Good to know. Yeah, I believe that is set in the bylaws. That's something the General Bylaw Committee, Advisory Committee would have to take up.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Thank you for that. Check that out. All right. Just one small announcement I'll make. We, last meeting, we had our review of the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and a couple of people were having trouble getting in on the chat to give their comments. But since then, it is up on the website. It was pretty well-publicized. Actually, I did go back and check. It was in the Gazette, it was in on our, on our website, in Facebook pages, et cetera. So, please do, there's an email there to write into Scott if you've got any comments about the Hazard Mitigation Plan update. We'll probably keep it open for, what, another week, maybe, or so? So, please, if you've got thoughts about it, questions or additions, just write into the email that's provided on the website or on the Facebook page, and we'll get that moving forward. Okay? All right. Great. Hi, Stephen. Okay, I think our first order of business tonight, we have a Bartholomew presentation. So, our folks are here from Bartholomew, our investment company. And please come on up and introduce yourselves, and whomever's gonna give us the lowdown here. And we have new material. Stephen, this is from June, just...
September 30 versus the outdated...
Thank you.
That's from September stuff. Okay. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Hi, Madam Chairman. My name's Chuck Patterson, Senior Vice President of Bartholomew Company. I have with me Alex Bartholomew, who is our Chief Investment Officer, and Brian Jamross, who is one of our Vice Presidents. Not with me is Sue Kelly, Michelle Newcomb, and Kathleen Klowaki, who we've met in the past. Just for you at home, we are an investment advisory firm out of Worcester. Our broker-dealer is Commonwealth Financial Network, which is the largest broker-dealer, independent broker-dealer in the country. National Financial Services are our custodian, and they are a subsidiary of Fidelia Investments. Bartholomew and Company, we manage just over $5 billion in assets under management. Of that, over $3 billion is city and town money for over 300 municipal entities here in the Commonwealth, New Hampshire, Maine, and Rhode Island. Me personally, myself personally, I should say, I am a former Treasurer of the Town of Shrewsbury, former Treasurer of Tantasco Regional School District, and past President of Mass Collected Treasurers. I am one of the main speakers at the annual school. And I teach our investment class, I teach their trust fund class, and I don't know whether it's good or bad. When they need something answered about investments, they call me. Matter of fact, I was one of the key people that allowed us to now talk about the prudent investor statute that you guys hopefully will adopt soon. What we have today is we're going to talk about, as you requested, September performance, September 30th performance. So, that's what you have before us. Just to clarify, what you had, excuse me, what you had in the past was from June 30th. This is, we give this to all our clients. It gives us a quick summary because the Treasurer, in their investment policy statement, they have to attest that they have reviewed who we are. They also have to give an economic overview. It's in your policy. And then, in the body of that, it gives you all of the three accounts. It gives you the accounting report that you all have seen, plus it gives you your investment policies. Then the last section that you have is Mass General Laws. So, what it does, it ties all of the stuff into a nice big picture so that the taxpayers can understand what your Treasurer or a Treasurer is doing here in the Commonwealth. So, we'll start, unless you have questions so far. I think when you, when we were before you the last time, we talked about three buckets of money. We talked about your general fund, and then that has a certain law, trust funds, and then OPEB. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Alex, who we're gonna first talk about your general fund. That's gonna be Chapter 4455. Very has to be, your investments have to be under one year, except for CDs. You can invest in the MMDT in all local banks. The MMDT, there is no, absolutely no guarantee by the state. I know it might have been said, no, by their own, I think you have received in an email where we stayed there actual...
Well, I think all investments, there's no guarantee on the rate of performance, and it's not based on past performance, correct?
No.
But MMDT has unlimited depository authority under Mass General Law.
Absolutely, but there's no guarantee of loss.
And there's no guarantee on any investment.
No, but they're not insured.
But they're not insured.
FDIC or...
But nothing in the stock market is insured by FDIC, only if it's in a local bank. And by law, we're prohibited from investing in credit unions, even though certain municipalities get away with it by saying they put their trust funds over there. But FDIC does not apply anywhere in any investment, in the investment account.
I think the only confusion, John, might have been, at least on my part, when I heard MMDT, because it's a state thing, I had in my head that that was a sort of a self-insuring fund.
And then it was not. So, thank you, Madam.
That's what I've learned.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I'm gonna turn this over to Alex, and he'll talk about your general fund. Very simple account, and I think you'll like what has happened so far this year.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi.
Nice to meet all of you. Nice to be here for the first time in front of you. As Chuck said, we do have three investment accounts, and we're gonna start with the lowest risk and work our way up, starting with the general fund account. What you have in front of you is a performance summary, portfolio summary, as of the quarter end, September 30th. And at, at that point in time, as you can see, starting on Page 2, this is a little under a $2.8 million account. And as Chuck indicated, this portfolio is very simple. This type of portfolio really was not used for 15 years post-2008, when interest rates were at zero. But since 2022, when interest rates went from 0% to over 5% in cash, this type of investment portfolio really became a thing again. A lot of money poured into money markets, a lot of money poured into the MMDT. But there's a lot of communities across the Commonwealth, across the nation, really, that are looking at the risks that they have in banks, where they're not making enough money, or deposits that exceed FDIC insurance, and saying, "What else can we do with it? How can we take advantage of higher interest rates?" This is that solution. We buy treasuries inside of one year. Now, certainly, there are communities that will buy CDs longer to try and get a higher rate of return. The problem there is that you are limited by the FDIC insurance of $250,000. And when you're working with millions and millions and millions of dollars, that becomes cumbersome to manage because we have to make sure we don't overlap with any deposits you have, of course, and you can only do so many positions in the portfolio. So, on Page 2, what you'll see on the left-hand side here, between cash and treasuries, is that we have a current yield of around 5%. On another page here, we're gonna look at the yield to maturity. So, in this portfolio and the trust fund portfolio, we're gonna always look at current yield and yield to maturity and total return. All these numbers tell us different things, and we want to make sure always to educate you on what numbers mean so that you, you walk away from these reviews feeling that you have a good sense of what's going on in the portfolio. So, current yield is representative of cash flow, not necessarily total return. It happens to be a high number in this case because the market has come our way. We're able to buy high coupons at even discounts below 100 per bond, and the current yield in the portfolio at the end of the quarter is nearly 5%. That is gross of fees. That is not net of fees, current yield. When we get to total return, all of those numbers will be net of fees, as they always are. Starting on Page 3, we look at the investment activity since inception, which is just May of last year. Like I said, this type of investment portfolio really wasn't used for 15 years post-2008. But after 2022, and for the last couple of years, we've started to see these types of investment portfolios open up again and be funded because of interest rate opportunities. So, since that funding, with money coming in, money going out, which you can visually see at the bottom of Page 3, we have a nearly 5% annualized rate of return, which is net of fees, as you can see there in the, in the verbiage in the third line from the, from the bottom there on the left. Fiscal year-to-date number is really just the first quarter of fiscal year '25, which is only 1.3%. So, as you continue to carry that through another three quarters, and we continue to accrue at prevailing interest rates, that number will make, make more sense in terms of annualized opportunity. Does anybody have any questions on these first two pages before I move forward? Okay, thank you. Now, I'm not gonna go page by page on all these reviews. I know you have a busy agenda. I just wanna hit, you know, the, the main strokes here. If you please turn your attention to Page 4, what you're going to notice is that we have an average yield to maturity of 4.67 in the upper right-hand corner. Compare that to the current yield of 4.97 and the annualized total return of 4.94. All these numbers are clearly in the vicinity, but as you, you can see, current yield being higher is not representative of total return expectation. Sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower. But we are in this vicinity of between 4% and 5% currently, based on markets. Rates have come up a lot, right, in the last six weeks or so, but not necessarily in this part of the market because the Federal Reserve Bank is continuing to cut rates. They started at 5.25 before the cuts. We are now 75 basis points lower after two meetings, and expect that to continue going downward with not an expectation now of where, when they will end or where they will end. It could be next year, it could be into 2026. As you continue going forward to Pages 6 and 7, you have more performance data. You can look at the performance on all these accounts on a trailing performance time period, year-to-date, one year, three years since inception, or calendar year by calendar year. Now, when you look at this portfolio versus benchmarks that we're using, those benchmarks are one to three-month, so 90-day ladder of treasuries. If you've looked at the interest rate curve over the last couple of years, it's been inverted. What that means is that cash has been at 5.25, which is the overnight lending rate for the Federal Reserve Bank. And as you go out further, six-month, one-year, three-year, 10-year, interest rates are actually lower. So, we have a laddered 12-month portfolio, which over time will outperform cash. But in a period where we have inverted interest rates, cash will outperform a laddered treasury portfolio. It doesn't mean it's a bad investment. It simply means that, what the market dynamics are over the last couple of years. But over time, we want to take full advantage of the ability in a general fund account to go out 12 months in a treasury and outperform cash over the long term, over a market cycle. And as the Fed continues to cut interest rates, that is exactly what we expect to happen. Okay? If you look, lastly, on Page 8... Sorry, Page 9. As of September 30th, we had before reinvestment. So, this is the end of the quarter, and we don't let cash sit. We only have cash in these portfolios based off of liquidity needs or simply because it's a maturity that hasn't been reinvested. But cash does not sit more than a couple of days or a couple of weeks based on our buying of fixed income. So, what you would ordinarily see is more treasuries laddered out quarterly throughout the 12 months. At the end of the, at the end of September, based on liquidity needs of the community, sitting in the highest-yielding money market at 5.2%, as you can see in the far column on the right on Page 9, in FIGXX. We are making sure that we keep cash in the highest-returning portfolio. So, this is the safest part of your investments. We either have it in treasuries, or we can only buy money market securities like FIGXX there that are backed by government securities, treasuries and agencies. Or the bank deposit sweep program, which we sweep out of frequently throughout the month to access the higher yield. Okay?
So, our total portfolio, then, is it the 2.7?
That's correct. So, as of September 30th, the portfolio value is $2.75 million.
Chris, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So, would I compare this to the fiscal year 2024 summary of the internal documents that you supported? Not the, not the statements, but your own spreadsheets. It show, can you speak a little bit to the fact that it shows in red a loss of $2,160.68 in general fund money? And why the layperson at home may interpret that to be a loss on general fund money?
Is that from the annual?
That's on the annual report on Page...
I'm getting there. One moment.
It's under where you have the COA Center and then the general fund?
Under on Page 70, maybe, or there about?
Fiscal year 2024, change in unrealized gain or losses. And specifically why potentially a, a non-educated person may see a negative $2,100 and say, "Why are we losing general fund money?"
Sure. That's a, that's a great question. So, with the accounting report, which, for all of you that have seen the binder that we have on June 30th or have it in front of you, this is what we're referring to. So, there's a tremendous amount of detail from left to right in these accounting reports.
Page 1.
It's not numbered. It's called Page 1 of 1. It's the last page in the Portfolio Review Section, which I know you're doing it digitally. So, these present significantly better in prints and hard copy than they do digitally. They really look like a, you know, a difficult-to-follow PDF. So, it's deep in there. In the Portfolio Review Section, I believe it's ordered trust funds, OPEB, and then general funds last. But to answer John's question, which is a very good question, there is a tremendous amount of detail in these portfolio accounting reports. One of the pros and cons is that we provide these accounting reports for the community, depending on whether they're mark-to-market or book value. So, in a general fund account, you are marking to market. So, if securities go up in value, you mark up. If the securities go down in value, you mark down. The return for the general fund over fiscal year '24 was $51,980 in net earnings minus $2,160 in change in market value. That change in market value also includes change in accrued interest. So, if we had treasuries mature or pay coupons, accrued interest gets reset and goes down in value. Doesn't mean we lost money. We actually made around $50,000 in value for the 12 months for the general fund for the Town of Southampton.
That's under the net earnings column?
That's correct. So, again, marking to market, which your Treasurer and your honorary will do every June 30th at a minimum, they would have marked around $50,000 for this portion of the general fund in total return. And not a loss. But seeing the breakdown of it from time to time, especially when it's in the unrealized, certainly can be confusing.
Yeah, no, and I'll, I'll just say for the record, I, well, Chuck specifically, I've had relationships with Chuck for over 15 years, and, you know, I don't question his integrity or his work and all that. So, I'll reserve all my questions for our current Treasurer afterwards. But I, I don't necessarily have an issue with, I do not have an underlying issue with Bartholomew and how they invest it. My bigger issue is we seem to have adopted a practice from the 90s, and we've never looked back to adjust to it, even though the market changes, which is not Bartholomew's issue. That's our Treasurer's issue. So, I'll reserve those questions when the Treasurer takes the mic.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Okay. As you may recall, those of you at home, now we're into the second bucket of money. This would be your trust funds, your stabilization, your CPA, your cemetery perpetual care funds. Okay, so they will fall under Chapter 4454. As you have heard, the law has changed as of, not this past August, August of '23. That's going to allow cities and towns to adopt the prudent investor statute, which is 203(c). So, now, currently, this portfolio is governed under that legal list of investments, about 22 stocks or so. And then Alex will get into how it's being invested. If you were to move to prudent, it would only amount to your trust funds, not your cemetery perpetual care, and not your state, I, I'm, I'm sorry, CPA. It does cemetery perpetual care. I misspoke. It's CPA and stabilization, cannot go prudent. Everything else in that account can. I misspoke.
Can I ask a question? What about gift funds? Does that fall under the trust funds? I know we have some modest gift funds. They're kind of old, they've been around for decades. Do they show up in the trust fund list?
They, they would show up in the trust fund section. There would be some discussions internally that you would have here on whether gifts can receive their own interest or not receive interest. That's a discussion you would have internally. But trust funds and gifts, for the most part, here in the Commonwealth, are handled the same way. And it's a debate internally. If you receive a $100,000 gift, it's hard to say to the donor, "You don't get your interest." And that's the discussions you would have with the donor. But if it's a gift, for the most part, here in the Commonwealth, gifts are handled like trusts. Okay? And that means they would fall under, if you chose to go prudent. So, I'll turn it over to Alex to take us through...
Before you leave the mic. Just given your, your reputation and the fact that you're a former Treasurer, I know the answer to this, but can you tell the people listening at home what the issue is with the legal list? Because people hear legal list, but they don't know who's overseeing it, how often it's updated, and why the MCTA has pushed for so long for the prudent person to be adopted.
Thank you.
Because we're gonna come up with this issue whether we move to adopt the prudent person or not, but so...
Okay. Through you, Madam Chair. John makes a valid point on why do you want to do this? As you'll see in the portfolio that Alex will go through, you have about 22 stocks. But one quarter of them are one industry, pharmaceutical industry. So, that's a high concentration in one industry. Okay? Second, when you do go prudent, not only do you pick up the diversification on the equity side, but you also pick it up on the bond side. It can be both ways. So, for instance, we have towns up in Maine, and they can buy a Caterpillar bond. They can buy a General Electric bond. They can buy, no, I shouldn't, you can buy General Electric here, a Caterpillar, Microsoft, versus here in the Commonwealth, you can't. So, the main reason why the Mass Collected Treasurers has always pushed for this was to give us that ability to diversify these gifts, as you've said, from our taxpayers to help grow the account versus having it, when you see the list, it's, it's not, it's from great American companies, so I'm not saying anything about the companies, but it, it's just not the diversification that a trust should be able to use.
And who currently determines what's on the legal list?
Currently, the Commissioner of Banks manages, and I use the term loosely, manages the trust, the, the list. There's more of a clerical aspect to it. The only way the list can be changed is by three credit unions petitioning the Commissioner of Banks and say, "We would like to see staples on the list." So, cities and towns can't do that. Only three credit unions. And as John alluded to before, we can't put money in credit unions. So, they have a real no desire to help us. And, long story short, the drawback or the big barrier that we were dealing with here in the Commonwealth when we'd been pushing prudent is that we really didn't know who was in opposition. So, when we're in the call with mass bankers, and we add the word prudent in our investing, he said to us that, "Well, if it's prudent to be in a credit union, you should be able to invest in credit unions." Ah ha. Finally, we found where the opposition was coming from, and we can't. So, there's no desire on anybody else's side to help cities and towns because we're pretty much standing here alone. And then, who else uses a legal list? All private trusts, or there will be private trusts, that in their wills might refer to the Massachusetts legal list. So, when Alex and I went to Boston many years ago, they are reluctant to do anything because they don't know what the, what effect it would have. And I think I told you guys last time about some of the companies that are on the list that were just drawn off because of a misunderstanding of a name. So...
So, how, how often does the list change? You mentioned 22 stocks.
It has not.
Before you were born, Chris.
It's supposed to be reviewed every July 1st, and the Commissioner of Banks. So, if you look at the list, matter of fact, I had one in my hand earlier today. It looks prettier now, but that's the extent of it.
Railroad's?
It has railroads.
Right.
So, you have railroad stocks, obligations, and then also... The only other way it can change, at the very end of the list, there's fund families. And if you notice that those have increased through the years. Matter of fact, Alex's, Alex's team helped get that through. Fund families can request to be on the list, as long as they, funds are all government-backed funds. So, if you go back to the June 30th presentation, at the very, very back, I believe one of the next-to-last pages, it will show you all those different funds.
And just, just for clarity, so with the 22 stocks on the legal list, then going to prudent, how does that open it up? What, what else do we get?
Okay. In theory, your trust funds then can look very much like your OPEB. So, it opens up to whatever is out there. And our team, working with committees, working with your Treasurer, we determine the proper asset allocation and risk tolerance, and that's where Alex and come in. And so, it can really change from when you, Alex will give you, you know, what your total return is now versus what your OPEB is. It's substantial. It's substantial, being able to move away from that.
Chris, I think being on a legal list, there's multiple layers of handcuffs that limit. Again, Bartholomew can only do what we approve. Now, up until the law changed on prudent person, there was an avenue to get prudent person. The local town could adopt it and move forward and do a workaround.
Yeah.
Southampton, for whatever reason, which we'll get to later, chose not to go down that path. But once you, if you do adopt a prudent person, which coincides with the bylaw suggestion that I've put forward, allows for a wider breadth, and again, you turn it over to the... And again, you turn it over to the professionals to run it. And prudent person is, would a prudent person with their own money invest it this way? If the answer is yes, you move forward. If the answer is no, you stop. And I'm oversimplifying the process, but.
Right. Okay.
One more thing on John's part. As John alluded to the fact that you could have always done the prudent, you could have taken it to town meeting, then you could have had your state rep, state center, take it into Boston, and then they would have made a Southampton law. That second part has been done for us. So now all that's left is your local action.
And I think in the annual review, maybe to answer Cindy's question, in the annual review that we got, that is the list of all the funds. So the cemetery fund, conservation trust, library trust, miscellaneous trusts, which would be the alminers, various others are in that. They're not in the September 1, in that level of detail. So yeah, go ahead, Alex.
Oh, yes. And you know, just to tie a nice bow on that, as of June 30th, in the trust fund portfolio, we're calling it a trust fund portfolio. It's really a stabilization CPA portfolio because it's a $3.6 million account. And I look here, it appears to be almost exactly $3 million of CPA and stabilization. So your opportunity here for the trust funds to be invested prudent investor is around $600,000. It's every dime counts, but unfortunately, we still have, would have a majority of this portfolio that would be bound by the legalist. So having, having said that, and that good news, you know, let's, you know, quickly and efficiently look at the trust funds because again, I want to be respectful of your time. We have the one click here as of September 30th. But keep that in mind because our recommendations for risk profile in a diversified commingled portfolio like this is going to be based off of how much of the portfolio is in things like stabilization, how much is in CPA where it's 100% expendable and can be voted at any town meeting at any time. This portfolio is very conservative with primarily fixed income, high quality, short duration fixed income, and just over 10% in equity, 10% in common stock, which is those, a subset of those 22 names. We effectively own all 22 that we can own as the list has gotten shorter and shorter, except for GE and for the last six or seven years since GE has turned into a completely different company from whence it was. The current yield in the portfolio on page two, again, current yield is not in no way representative of total return in this portfolio. But with higher interest rates, we've seen that continue to creep up is at 2.37%. So just under $90,000 in estimated annual income. Again, not representative of estimated total return, and I will demonstrate that, but of income. When we look on page three, which is a really good example of this, since inception, the portfolio is annualized around 1.8% annualized for a total gain of $476,000 since 2011 with contributions along the way. Fiscal year to date, which is just the third quarter of the calendar year ending September 30th, the portfolio gained $122,000 with a good market for fixed income and equities in this case. You see that on the right hand side there of page three. As we turn the page, the current, the yield to maturity. So remember, the current yield of the portfolio was 2.37%, not representative of total return. Yield to maturity, which is more representative of total return, because this is 90% fixed income, is 4.06%. Now, why is that lower than the general funds we were just looking at? Because of that inverted yield curve. The further we go out in this market over the last couple of years, when I say further we go out, the maturity date is longer, two year, three year, four year, five year, we're actually getting a lower return. Now, over time, when the Fed cuts rates as they're doing right now, this portfolio will be rewarded for that, for that persistence in that ladder. It is a very high quality bond portfolio with an average rating of A plus and mostly dominated by treasuries and corporate bonds that are on the legal list. On page six and page seven and page eight, when we have performance, we have a calendar year to date return of 5.3%, a one-year return of 9%, pretty, pretty good for a 90% short-term fixed income portfolio. The reason for that is because interest rates peaked on, in October last year and rallied, fixed income rallied very, very hard. The 10-year treasury as an example peaked at over 5% and then bottomed out at about 3.6% here in August and September. So we've seen fixed income returns be very, very good in this one-year time period specifically after struggling in 2022 with rising interest rates. The direction and path of interest rates really dominates the direction of returns that you have in this portfolio. But even that 10% in equity has helped this portfolio, which needs to be very conservative because it is primarily stabilization CPA, outperform short-term fixed income and at least over the long term, be more competitive with inflation. We're not going to try and keep up with inflation when it's 9%. But these types of portfolios that have longer track records certainly have done that when inflation over time is, you know, between 2 and 3%. So does anyone have any questions about the risk profile, investment strategy of this, you know, limited legalist universe and how, you know, we certainly believe that we are using the tools available to us, investing this with the right level of risk for the community because the last thing we need in a bad recession and a budgetary crisis is the stabilization to be at a loss.
So again, everything out of this portfolio, except for the stabilization funds, can be prudent?
That's correct. Stabilization and CPA.
But they're not currently because we haven't adopted the bylaw.
Correct, yeah. CPA, so community preservation funds?
Community preservation cannot. Yeah. So when you look at your accounting report for any date, the last two sections of the accounting report are CPA and then stabilization funds.
You spoke to the fact that you've laddered this towards longer duration bonds in the present environment of declining interest rates.
Yeah.
It may be harsh, but does that mean it'll lose less than others in the future? Should we expect less annual income in a declining interest rate environment?
No, that's a good question. So in a declining interest rate environment, like we've seen over the last 12 month time period, take that as a microcosm where yields across the curve were at their highest they've been and they've come down since then. Because of the way we're positioned, our portfolio outperformed the index by 200 basis points, 2%. So even though we're buying into the inverted yield curve because of our positioning, because of our duration, when yields come down, we're actually positioned to have fixed income price appreciation. Okay. And that one-year return is again, a small example of that. Okay.
Why can't CPA funds be in this prudent category?
CPA funds have their own mass general laws statute, just like stabilization, and they were not included in the prudent investor. And Chuck can certainly speak to that.
When you refer back to the laws as they're written, stabilization says whatever is legal for savings banks. That directly refers to the legal list. When you go over to the law that created CPA, it says, chapter 4454. So now you're scratching your head. It is the unintended consequence, in theory, because you're amending 4454, you could use CPA under prudent, but it was never the intended method of doing so.
Each individual municipality has to make a bylaw or vote to let them be part of this investment? Is that what you're saying?
When you take your vote at town meeting, you will amend chapter 4454. And you're going to add in section B that refers to 203C, the prudent investor statute. With that being said, when you look at our annual review in the back, you'll see the law. And again, it's never been the intent of the legislature to affect CPA. It was always there to only affect your trust funds. So if you wanted to take it to council and said, hey, we'd like to invest CPA under the prudent statute, you probably could, but that's not the intent.
It would be similar to two years ago, the homeroom petition path to get to the prudent person, which now has been removed from us. You could do the CPA.
You could do CPA, but it might be already available to you when you look at the specific law. Because when you read CPA law, it refers to chapter 4454. If you amend 4454, in theory, you could go CPA. But I would defer to council and see if they agree. But it was never the intent of the people that put this thing through. Okay.
And is there a restriction currently, knowing that the town hasn't adopted any bylaws to the contrary? When you said CPA funds could be invested in anything similar to, or permissible by a savings bank, right?
No, that was stabilization says.
All right. So how, right now, as the law stands, how can CPA funds be invested?
Legalist.
Legalist only. Does that include or exclude MMDT?
MMDT is a, I believe it's referenced that you can use MMDT in everything.
Right. And just because we're going to get to this later, up until two years ago, MMDT was probably less than a tenth of a basis point.
Correct.
But today, historically, within the past 18 months, it's much better than that.
Correct. So history has it. MMDT has a usual about a 90-day duration. It is always going to trail rates. So as John said, when interest rates on the short side were 10 basis points, 15, none of the treasurers had money at the MMDT. Now, because of what Alex said, with the inverted yield curve, short rates are higher. Well, you're seeing people, when I was in Chusby, I had money at MMDT, but then I didn't. So I always used the MMDT as that lever whenever it was appropriate. To your question earlier about lowering interest, where that question really comes into play is when you're talking about your general fund. So if you've seen a large number of dollars coming through on your local side as far as investment income, when Alex was referring to lowering interest rates by 75 basis points, then on your general fund side, yes, that will really come into play, but not so as much on your trust funds, but your general fund most definitely.
So looking at, just to the annual review, and again, just for people that are listening, so as we're talking about CPA and stabilization funds, the way I'm reading this, if I'm correct, we had an earnings of 177,000 thereabouts on the CPA account. Is that right?
Is that in the group, get all the different parts?
It's the total of the CPA. Sorry, wrong one, wrong column. Hold on, wrong column. Hold on.
That's the ending earnings.
That's the ending earnings.
That's the balance of your earnings.
Yeah, sorry. So the ending, where did I see it?
So for the 12-month time period ending June 30th of 2024, the CPA account had net earnings of $30,000 with a change in market value of another $31,000.
Do you know what that equates to out of percentage?
Yes, I do. In the, in the performance review, a couple of pages prior to that, you would look at the one-year numbers. So the one-year number as of June 30th for the portfolio is 4.9%. Again, in a 10% equity portfolio and a 90% fixed income portfolio.
And the 4.9 is after fees.
That's correct. Yeah. We are prohibited now and always from sharing gross return numbers based on SEC marketing rules.
So what we should be looking at is the change in unrealized gain or loss or just the unrealized gain and loss column?
The change unrealized is going to be the return you made over the time period and the unrealized is the balance.
It's the balance.
Right. So you have income statement versus balance sheet type of numbers.
So that's around the 25,000 for CPA, right?
So CPA is 25,000 in balance, right. So that means that starting the fiscal year, it had an unrealized balance of negative 5,000. And that's due to the interest rate risk we experienced in 2022.
And then the three stabilizations altogether would have been about 218 in terms of unrealized gain.
Unrealized gain, we have $24,400 over that time period. There was significant contributions to stabilization, but you know, based off of this summary, I don't know when throughout the year, but it certainly wasn't earlier in the fiscal year because they would have made more.
But basically, all of our trust funds have earned something compared to what we were thinking. They might not have been. So I think that page, it's page 38.
There are no red numbers in there.
There's no red numbers in there. Yeah. No, and I think too, as we go through this, I think is, and I don't know that we've got this up, but I think I will ask Jen to post this up on our website so that people can see the annual report and just get an understanding of what that is. Because we've got, you know, I know we have our, or we had our cemetery person, I guess he's left. Okay. But like the cemetery commissioner, the conservation people, they're always looking to figure out, what do we have in our trust fund, you know, and just trying to understand that better. And so I think it's important to have that kind of information available to them. But go ahead, please.
So the last thing on the CPA with prudent investor, we have other communities that long went for special legislation for their CPA. Just keep in mind, because CPA is 100% expendable, that the risk profile you choose utilizing the prudent investor should be representative of that fact. So expand your diversification, reduce your concentration risk, but you know, be, be smart and mindful about choosing the right risk profile that for the community based off of spending habits and spending expectations. Okay. Okay. Who's ready to talk about the last bucket of money?
For you at home, OPEB, other post-employment benefit. This is the money that towns have to set aside for retiree health insurance. And this came down from Gatsby probably 10, 15 years ago. And then now cities and towns now must start, one, they had to account for it. And then now a lot of towns in the country are starting to set money aside. And how this money is being invested is that 203C, that prudent investor statute. So when you look at, when Alex was over the portfolio, you're going to say, oh, so this could look like our trust funds. So there's going to be, I was in a meeting with a city near Boston, and what's, what's it going to look like? And I said, well, if you look at your OPEB, that's what your trust fund prudent can look like down the road if you choose to do so.
Thank you. Okay. So as of September 30th, again, with, for the OPEB trusts. Now, the OPEB trust has been invested with us since 2015. And as you can see in the bottom of page three, it has, like it has in every single community, started from near zero. And as you've continued to contribute, and I'm not sure how you have, whether it's in the budget, percentage of free cash, special one-time reserves, you've, you've worked hard to put money in. And that is all based off of your actuarial study with your actuary, working also in conjunction with your auditor to fund this unfunded liability. And we are here to invest the long-term portion, just like your pension funds, to generate a higher rate of return. And someday, after all of us are long gone, draw on it to supplement the budget. What is very common over this time period is that communities with their initial funding of, you know, 50, $100,000 would start off very conservatively. So what we're going to look at is we're going to look at a portfolio that's invested 70% in equity and 30% in fixed income, but hasn't always been invested that way. The performance reporting, however, reports it as if it had been. Okay. So keep that in mind. So as we look at this portfolio, page two is a nice, it's called the sand graph. It's meant to represent the asset allocation over time. You can see visually in there, although it's incredibly hard unless you look at them regularly, to see that the risk profile has changed over time. But on page three, we've made 5.65% annualized on this portfolio, which I would not describe as a 70/30 portfolio performance over this time period because it hasn't been. However, in the first quarter of this fiscal year, the portfolio has made 5.2% alone. We don't tend to look at short-term performance like this in any of the accounts, but this is what's presented in front of us. So we're, we're going to look at it. And so we're at nearly $160,000 in total return, net of fees cumulative since 2015, as you've continued to contribute money and generate returns in the market. Calendar year to date, as I start turning my, to page four, is 12%, just under 12%. Relative benchmarking again is actually higher than that. The one-year number of 22% outperforming the relative benchmarks. Three-year number struggling at 2.66 versus 4.5. Longer-term numbers is six and a half and five and a half. Longer-term numbers is six and a half and five and a half. As we build these portfolios up, we have worked hard with all of our communities to increase the risk profile. That helps long-term returns, it helps the actuarial study. And as they get to a size that is appropriate, and we are getting there with the town's OPEB trust, we start adding in institutional investments. These are things like private equity, non-treated real estate, private credit. Not only do these types of investments help your return expectations, but they also help your actuarial study, because actuarial studies for the funded portion really are indicative of your forward-looking returns. So if you tell your actuary, we have five-hundred thousand dollars in OPEB trust, but it's in the bank somewhere, they can't exactly project you're going to make a lot of money with it. That hurts your discount rate, hurts your unfunded liability. But if you have it invested appropriately, if you have it invested with private equity, real estate, you have an investment policy statement that says that, which you do have an investment policy statement, that increases the discount rate, that increases your forward-looking returns and helps your unfunded liability. The town doesn't have these exposures, not because the town has said no, but because it hasn't been at the size needed to do it yet. But we are getting close as you continue to fund. And more and more communities across the Commonwealth are doing that.
There a specific threshold, the dollar threshold?
The half-million-dollar threshold that you're at is a big marker, and we can start going in that direction. So it's certainly something that we will be talking about going forward. And, you know, I expect a foregone conclusion that we will, we will start moving in that direction. So, you know, the market commentary of this portfolio is obviously, and you look on page five, which I like looking at a lot when doing reviews, because particularly one with a track record, it tells a story. We can look at all the calendar years, and we know generally what happened. We can look back in 2022 and see the portfolio was down nearly eighteen percent. And we know what happened that year, rising interest rates, rising inflation, negative equity prices, negative fixed income prices. There really was no place to hide, and we underperformed. But all of the calendar years around it, starting with two thousand and nineteen, have all been double-digit total returns. Starting in two thousand and nineteen, seventeen percent, fourteen and a half percent, ten percent in 2021. And the last two calendar years, fourteen percent, and nearly twelve percent here in the first three quarters of twenty-four. That's more representative of a seventy-thirty portfolio than it was in the beginning. So we want to continue to invest this portfolio at this risk profile. This is where eighty to eighty-five percent of our clients are invested in OPEB. The next step is just to include private markets. So as you can see in the OPEB portfolio, compared to trust funds, compared to general funds that are bound by different, various master general laws, the world is more your oyster, and we can do a lot more. But you are, you are able to take on more risk. Prudent investor doesn't mean you have to take on more risk. It just gives you the option.
Chris?
Yep, go ahead.
How, the OPEB?
Yeah.
How often, if at all, does it rebalance? And do we have to trigger that, or is it automatically triggered?
At a minimum, we're going to rebalance annually. Our blended benchmarks that we track performance against rebalance on January first. We will do trades throughout the year. If I showed you a transaction activity summary every single calendar year, there's always trades in and out. When I say in and out, I mean rebalancing variances or changing securities, changing asset allocations based off of market conditions. And no, you do not need to trigger that.
Okay, and then sorry.
It's okay.
And then earlier, you talked about OPEB should be seventy-thirty, however, we're not quite there yet.
No, you are there now, yeah.
Well, now.
Yeah.
So when I look on page five and nine.
Sure.
And I see the total rate of returns, should I be looking at the seventy-thirty equity bonds as a benchmark to our actual performance?
So that's, that's one of them. I mean, as you know, in, in all data analysis, sometimes there's not a perfect data point to look at. So we provide, as part of our, you know, our culture of education, we provide several blended benchmarks. We have three here. One, the first one includes stocks, bonds, and hedge funds as representative by alternatives. The second one is stocks, bonds, and liquid alternatives, which are daily liquid SMAs. And then the third one is just stocks and bonds. So we want to provide a portfolio that is outperforming on both a relative return basis, but also a risk-adjusted return basis. That's not something we can really garner from this page. So even though the performance of the portfolio is five-sixty-five since inception and seventy-thirty benchmark is seven percent, again, it hasn't been invested that way over the same time period, but this isn't a good representation of relative risk, beta, alpha, up capture and down capture, as we want in an institutional portfolio that you would expect from a pension system or anything like that.
Okay, but as a as a general layperson.
Sure.
When you look at these rolls of numbers.
Yep.
Over time, year over year, shouldn't we be able to draw our line, our eye, to a single benchmark and say, this is where we're trying to get to? We haven't been able to get there yet because we haven't had the funds to get to the full seventy-thirty, but as we progress past the half million and the million, it just seems like we should be able to call out a benchmark, whether we're there or not, or beating it, or getting close. I mean, if, this is saying seven-point-zero-seven, if we were one percent, it'd be a different conversation. I would say these two numbers are relatively close compared to the assets that are in the portfolio. We had a five-million-dollar portfolio, I would argue it should be closer. But time over time, select board over select board, we change every three years. You know, we should have a consistent, a consistent benchmark to look towards. Under that disguise, should it be something other than the seventy-thirty on this page?
No, going, I mean, going forward, I think all three of these benchmarks have merit. Again, it's, it's because we are, we do have alternative exposure. So if we just looked at the seventy-thirty benchmark, understanding that we have fifteen to twenty percent of the portfolio in alternatives, it's going to not give a clear picture of experience. But then again, how do you represent alternatives? Do you use hedge funds? Do you use liquid SMAs? Do you use just private equity, just real estate? So looking at things from different angles and understanding where the differences lie helps in understanding the experience. And it helps in understanding how we're invested differently and why the performance was similar or different. So it's not meant to confuse in any way, shape, or form. It's not meant to misrepresent. It's really meant to educate and provide more information so that in an institutional environment such as this, we can have those higher-quality conversations with our committees, with our treasurers that we work with.
Okay.
But aiming for the seventy-thirty equity bonds is not a bad target, right?
Well, I think what I heard by definition, that's where the OPEB.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, that's, that's our, that's our target. And again, we, we need to be long-term, providing an investment portfolio that outperforms all these benchmarks. I just don't have the date on the top of my head.
Do you mind if I?
I knew you did, I knew you did.
I had something to say, right? I drove all the way here in traffic, I gotta say something.
I better let you speak at least, right?
Yeah, hey, that's okay, and it was terrible out tonight, my goodness. So the portfolio started on, good evening. The portfolio started two thousand and fifteen, February. It was sixty-five, thirty-five, then it on, I'm sorry, these dates are backwards. May of twenty-twenty-two, it went to seventy-thirty. And then, just for a reference point.
Did you give me that date again, May of twenty-two?
Yes, May of twenty-two.
So let's keep that in mind. That is early on in twenty-twenty-two's performance. So increasing risk profile for a perpetual asset is never a bad decision, timing-wise. But in the short term, increasing risk entering a bad market.
That's probably the wrong year to do it.
In hindsight, but hindsight is twenty-twenty, and what we tell all of our clients, both private and institutional, it's never the wrong time to do the right thing for the long term.
It's a good, I'll have to remember that one.
Okay, good. Anybody have?
Yeah, I do. I'm the representative of the ordinary citizen on this board.
I'm sorry.
My name is Cindy Palmer, and I'm the representative of the ordinary citizen on the select board. Therefore, and these are all far more expert than I am.
I'll deliver.
But John, and Chris, and Stephen, and Dan, what is our responsibility at this point? And we're listening to this presentation, and I'm sure everybody at home understands it completely, but maybe not. So I just wonder, what, what is it, what are our steps at this point that we need to be thinking about? What is the takeaway for the other ordinary citizens in South East?
I'd say two things, from my point of view. One is, I think we need to take a look at our investment policy, make sure it's up to date with where we are now and what's happening out in the bigger world. Because I think we did look at it probably three, three years ago, I'm thinking, maybe we did. I know a previous select board, we reauthorized it or something, I'm thinking. But then take a look at what we want to do for a town meeting of looking at going into the prudent status and see if that's an option for us to do that. John?
Right, and additionally, I would say, and again, I'll, I'll say this for the second time. I have no problem with the professionalism or the performance that Bartholomew does. They're one of probably a handful of groups within the Commonwealth that are good. My issue is more of, we seem to be still on the nineteen-ninety model, and we've never adjusted for real-time changes. And that's an internal issue. No, they're, they're working as directed.
Where's the nineteen-ninety model in our, in our government?
Our investment policy was set up then, we've never adopted the OPEB, we've never gone to, and, you know, before she, our treasurer gets up there and says that, our treasurer has been before the body before, and before I was even on the select board advocating to adopt the prudent person. And this is the body that allows it to go to the voters or not. That being said, you know, it, I think our role is just to be the sounding board, to let the citizens hear what's going on here, and to show that, yeah, we're not going to, you're not going to make the greater you should, as a municipal, municipality, you should not be making the ready returns you're doing in your, in your private portfolios. Because your private portfolios, in theory, are taking on much more risk than what's allowed to happen with general tax dollars or general funds and that nature. But looking forward and going forward, times have changed, and we have the consideration to adopt MGL, Chapter forty-one, forty-five, so Section forty-seven, which then creates a committee versus putting all the authority, leaving all the authority with the treasurer to decide what's going on. A treasurer that is, you know, trying to run the office and the day-to-day, to then throw on the prudent person and add this other stuff, it's just compounding and adding to it when, my argument, as I proposed this at a public meeting, is it's time to adopt this other law that allows for a committee. And then the treasurer is acting, you know, it's basically adding a citizen's portion of Bartholomew, or whoever the agents are, to look at this stuff and review this stuff so that the treasurer and collector can focus on the collection of taxes, the balancing of books, the turnovers of revenues and receipts in a timely fashion. I'm not looking to add more work to the treasurer, I'm looking to diversify, which then does mean, in our community of sixty-seven hundred people, three citizens have to come forward to fill this role should the bylaw pass.
And it isn't the finance committee. It's a different.
No, but I'm happy to appoint Reggie or nominate Reggie for the office. But I think as we grow, this is just too much to just keep piling on one person or one office, and we need to expand. And again, Bartholomew is operating a hundred percent within the guardrails that we have established. And I think maybe we need to change some of those guardrails under the existing laws that are allowed. And maybe performance won't increase, but maybe it will, it doesn't matter. That's not the drive of, at least my point of view. I'm not saying you got to give me fourteen percent, you got to beat the average way to return of the S and P by double.
Okay, and just looking at this, we, the last time we, as a select board, signed off on the investment policy was two thousand and nineteen. So it is time.
Yeah.
Time to take a look at that again.
I see it as a risk to be restricted to this legal list of what, twenty-whatever stocks? That seems, they said it was a very diversified list, so I see that as a, as a risk in itself, so as a town.
Kind of hems us in a bit, yeah.
Hems us in, yeah.
Seems to be, good. All right, any other questions for these folks here? If not, thank you very much for coming. I think.
Thank you.
We've learned a lot tonight, I think we've asked our questions, and hopefully shed some light on things. And I think we've got a, a better sense of what we have for options out there. Because even if we had talked about the prudent thing last year, which we probably did, it didn't really sink in in terms of, well, you guys might need to think about taking some action, because we could have brought this earlier on perhaps. But we will have town meetings ahead of us in the coming year, so we'll take a look at the idea and see what we can come up with.
Well, thank you very much, thank you for the opportunity to come before you.
Yeah, no, thanks for taking your time, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, do we have any other thoughts? Jen, you want to add something to the mix here?
Are we getting, is the treasurer going to address and speak out about the specific bylaw? Or is that not on tonight's agenda?
We didn't have it on the agenda per se.
Have we rescheduled that for another public hearing?
For the new, the potential new bylaw, is that what you're talking about? I'm sorry.
Correct, I mean, I only sent in a proposed agenda that we'd hear from Bartholomew, and then we'd dive more into details in the treasurer's office and.
Right. I think I'd like to put that on in a future meeting in early December sometime, to talk about that and what that would look like. Okay?
Okay.
We've got a long meeting tonight with various people waiting for.
Oh, I mean, the poll hearing's not till seven-thirty. We can't even have that here for twenty-five minutes.
Okay. Well, if you've got specific questions, I don't know. Do we have, do we have a draft of a bylaw that we would have to adopt, that we'd have to, the bylaw committee will be meeting soon.
I thought this, this board submitted the Mass General Law.
You have a draft?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
To the, to the bylaw committee.
Come on up for a second, just. Yeah.
No, no, that's not what I'm talking about.
Okay, you're talking about the committee, the forming the.
Well, I don't have a draft of the committee.
Where is it? Come on up, so you've got what, you've got a draft of the prudent investor one?
Right.
Okay.
Senator Day, treasurer, collector.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't have a draft for, to form the committee.
Okay.
I support forming the committee.
Do we, can we get a copy of some other towns to take a look at, or how does that work?
If I might, Chris, I believe our treasurer submitted the draft of the prudent person along with the annual report. I think it was like the last three or four pages, with her recommendation that we adopt it. Prudent person.
Okay, yes.
So we have that, she did send that in.
Yeah.
My questions are more about the committee.
Right.
But I just heard the treasurer say she supports.
Right.
The creation of it.
So how do we go about creating the committee, is the, is the whole?
We adopt Mass General Law, Section forty-five.
Yeah.
Or Chapter forty-one, Section forty-five, and Section forty-seven.
What comes first, I guess, if we have to have a bylaw or something ready for town meeting?
Well, it's a copy and paste forty-five into a bylaw to get the voters to accept it. But I think it sends a better message if both the select board and the treasurer slash collector are endorsing the adoption of it. And if we do it at a special meeting, because then the bylaw calls for the election.
Right.
Or the appointment, then we can do that at a regular meeting and run that off in the next year.
All right. Well, maybe, maybe.
I think I only sent that to you and Scott, I'll send it to the whole committee.
Yeah, okay, why don't you do that, yeah, share that information with us, okay? All right, good. Any other things that you'd like to share from the treasurer's point of view on this whole investment scenario? Are you generally comfortable and happy with the investments as you're seeing them? And your level of communication with Bartholomew, or they with you, and?
Yeah, I'm comfortable, they come out, they do a semi-annual review every year, an annual review. They send the quarterly reports. I think that they pretty much covered everything in their presentation, but I'm happy with what they're, you know, how they've invested the money.
With the, with the trust funds in particular, because I, again, as I'm seeing those with Concom and CPA and Cemetery and all those folks, you know, all those boards and committees are always, I mean, from what I think I understand, they can only spend the interest on those funds, if I'm not mistaken. They usually can't do anything more except dip into the interest on whatever's been earned, so.
It depends on the.
It depends, yeah, but most of them are only the interest.
Yeah, so it's depending on how that trust fund or whatever has been structured within that board or committee, or, okay.
Yeah, and how the, basically how the will is set up, like how the, whoever donated wanted it to be spent.
So I think it would be beneficial, I mean, I would like you to put the, the annual report up on, on the treasurer's page on the website. But let's take whichever that page was on the, the listing of all the many, the trust funds, and just, just copy out that page and send it to each of the committees that are listed there. So Cemetery, Concom, Alminers, whoever was listed there, so they know what's happened for the year, because I don't know that they have a clue.
If I send it to all departments, are they all on there, Scott?
Not departments, no, because these are committees, they're, they're not.
Well, if Cemetery Commission would, that would be a separate email.
I can just send it to the separate committees, that's fine.
Yeah, if I could, I mean.
I don't want to put myself in a place where I'm defending an independently elected person, but the data's there. The issue why the committees can't see it is because we're not getting the turnovers and everything processed and posted in time to close the books and open up the books. Because once you do, then the starting balance and ending balance hits there.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I think the treasurer's office has a role to play in why that's not happening, but that, they're not the sole owner of the issues there. But if we can figure out timely turnovers, we have the ending balances.
Yes, no, I understand.
And then it'll go to the committees through the reports versus having a supplemental. If we could just get timely with our. If we could just get timely with our accounts.
Yeah, I guess I don't know how much, okay, the department heads, whomever see the, the revenue and expense reports, I don't know how much the various committees.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt for them to see.
Somebody else looks at those. I have no idea.
It wouldn't hurt for them to see the report, so it's fine to send them out to them.
And they don't need the 100-page report. They need a couple pages that are relevant to.
Just that main quarterly report.
The legal side report.
One page just showing like what they have in interest, because interest is most likely the expendable.
What's been, what's been earned.
I, as you know, have been involved with the Alminers for several years, but I will find our accountant to be wonderful. If I go in there and ask questions about what's been posted that I see as interest, I'm now thinking that's interest from the investments. It's not the principal, it's posted in a different account as interest and, and an account that we can spend.
Right, right.
However, what I don't understand, Jen, is given this large pot of trust funds, this report here, how do you differentiate or determine, whoa, this little Alminers fund that's only, you know, got $17,000 in it and is earning interest, how is, is there some kind of mechanism to say you get, you know, .33% of the whole, the whole lot? And that is a mystery to me.
Well, Bartholomew.
It's still there, it's still there.
Yeah.
Yes, Cindy.
Well, I like yes, but.
And it's by the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven spreadsheet that.
Well, as long as, you know, I mean, you're looking at these monstrous accounts, I mean, total, you know, millions, but.
Very, very simply.
Oh, good.
You have, you could have 100 accounts, you could have a million accounts.
Okay.
For every one of them, and they have a percentage of ownership of the whole. So if you have a $1,000 account and you have $10, you have, you know, 10% or whatever, 1% of the, the fund. And then we reapportion on that accounting report, that same percentage of gains, losses.
Okay.
Realized gains, income. So that's how the accounting report is built, based off of each fund's percentage of the bigger number.
That makes a whole lot of sense. And so that's all sort of computed in some kind of big computer.
It's a big Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah, that's good.
That's all it is.
We'll just try to make the information more.
Yeah.
So that's the document I would share, if you're gonna share, I would share the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven spreadsheet by fund, not, again, at the committee level or the department level, just that piece. They could find their line item, they could see their piece.
No, exactly, yeah. They don't need the 100-page report. They just need to understand.
Yeah, just that one page.
Where they fit, yeah.
Right, okay.
And let them know if this is the case, that they can go to our accountant, who's always willing to, you know, print out these things for me, so.
Yes.
That's the way, right way to go. That's you, Bradley, and you always do a very highlight to me.
Think how much better it would be when they're just timely.
Right.
And they're in our monthly reports.
That's your responsibility, to make sure they're timely.
Listen, I'm not the chair.
Well, we've got that already written down, so we've had it, we've had some meetings about that, and that's getting closer and closer, so. Yeah, anything else on that?
I'm all set.
Okay, anybody else? All right. So we will keep, keep working. We will figure out how we have to look at, whatever language we need to do to look at the prudent option and, and whatever we need to do for bylaws.
We also need to pass the, the MGL that would allow us to adopt, re-adopt MGL, Chapter 32, so, so we can form the OPEB Declaratory Trust.
Okay.
We need to do that also at the next town meeting.
So.
And that's for the, the auditors are asking us to do that.
So that would be the third bylaw, in which I, they may have touched on it, but they didn't go into any detail during this public hearing as to why we should or should not adopt it.
Right. Well, the auditors have recommended that we do adopt it. Do you have detail about why or not?
That's another.
And I guess, real quick, what are the pros or cons?
So, you guys were one of the first ones to adopt it years ago, and in that language that you adopted, it didn't have the real formal way trusts are set up in the Commonwealth. How they're spent, who's the trustee, who's the custodian. So when you re-adopt, you, at some point in time, you were going to have to do it. So all the towns that went first are now having to go back and re-adopt it just to get, in the original law, it didn't tell you how to spend it. Didn't say.
So we're re-adopting the OPEB trust funds?
Correct. That's all you're doing, 32B20. That's all you're doing, just re-adopting it. Just, you know, when you look at our handout in the back, you'll see what it once was, I think maybe a couple of paragraphs, now it's multiple pages.
Okay.
So that's all you're doing. You're just re-adopting, creating a trust, and then technically you have to have a declaration of a trust that has to be recorded with the town clerk. We can provide that for you. Your town gets recorded and so on and so forth. So it's cleaning up and making things all nice and clean and orderly. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Looks like we've got a few articles for a special town meeting coming up.
Actually, if I may.
Yes, please.
Through the chair, we spoke to your town treasurer last year about this time, actually. Excuse me, I have a little frog in my throat. With the, with the information for the re-adopting the declaration, uh, excuse me, re-adopting the 32B20, we gave her sample language.
Okay.
To do so, and we wanted it to, you know, the auditors and coincide with Modernization Act of November 7th of 2016. Really, just cleaning it up and to coincide with in the Modernization Act change. I know there was some change of town administrators and, so it just hasn't been done yet. It's just some housekeeping.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's good to know.
And the original date was May 21st, 2013, that you passed it for OPEB. I'm a detailed guy.
May 21st, 13?
Yeah. It was Article 24.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All righty. Okay, thank you. Jen, unless you have anything else?
I'm good.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
For that. All right. We have our public hearing at 7:30, so before that, I'd like to jump ahead. We have one other person who's here visiting, Bridget from Kestrel here. We have an APR document to sign. If you'd like to put that, that's under the first item in new business, I'd like to move that forward while you're here, and then we'll slowly get back to our poll hearing. So Bridget, talk about this APR for the Hammel family to sign.
Yes. Yeah, so the town should have received from the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, the APR document for the Hammell land, also known as Glendale Ridge Winery. And this is for the east side of the property, approximately 30 acres, that's being placed under the agricultural preservation restriction, which means a restriction's being granted to ensure the land will use in perpetuity for agricultural purposes. This is majority funded through state and federal funds, but a portion, the local match, as required by the APR program, is coming from CPA funds, 22,500. This is part of the big package that was voted in under the Mountain Waters Project at last town meeting, December 5th, 2023. And so the town is being listed as a coholder in the restriction as part of providing that local match. And we're asking to have the select board sign the restriction itself, and then you've also received the invoice for that 5% local match.
Okay. And I'm looking at this, so it looks like all of us need to sign, not just one, all of us need to sign on this? Okay. Um, okay. Does anybody have any questions or discussion about this?
I think when I, I'm sorry, when I looked at this a little early, do you need Conservation Commission signatures as well?
No, it's either or, so.
Okay.
Yep.
We can do that. Okay. So can I, oh, you wanna?
Wait, Stephen had a question.
No, I thought.
No, I wanted to make sure you saw Cindy.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's it. I was gonna make a motion that we.
I think you can do that.
Sign, that we, the select board, will accept that and sign to implement the agricultural preservation restriction on the Glendale Ridge Vineyard property. That's part of the Mountain Waters Project. Does that sound right?
Yep, we have a motion.
Second.
Second by Stephen. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. John will return, but anyway, four, four and one absent at the moment. And do we have the final documents to sign, or we do? I didn't know whether the Hammels had to sign first, or we did, or whatever, so just however. Yep.
Okay, so do you want to take it tonight?
I think it'll be notarized and used.
Yeah, we have to, we see notarized.
So I can come.
So we all just get to sign it before we leave.
Lucy can notarize it afterward.
Okay, on camera.
And just a point of clarification, again, this is for the east side of the property. The west side of Glendale Ridge Winery is gonna be placed under a traditional conservation restriction, and that'll be coming in 2025.
That'll be a separate thing, right?
Yes.
Okay. So this is only about the 30 acres right now?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
There we go. Okay, and then there'll be a couple of other things that are still part of that Mountain Waters thing that'll be coming up for us in 2025.
Yep, we'll be moving it along.
Yeah, sounds good. All right, glad to see it moving.
You have complicated timelines and slow turnaround from many critical partners, but the more you can give us advanced knowledge and our clerk to distribute the final documents that we're gonna execute, very much appreciate that.
Yes, absolutely. Understood.
Because a lot of those will probably have much more detail in terms of conservation restrictions laid out much more than this did in particular, I think.
Yep.
Particularly where either we own the property or we're receiving conservation restriction as primary holder.
Yes.
We're a coholder and we have little exposure, I would say.
Yep, yes.
We're committing, or we have committed to town funds, and so we sign the document.
Yep, no, that's good.
Also.
So John, we took a vote on this while you were absent?
Yep, I'm okay with it.
You're okay with it?
Yep.
Can we count you as a 5-0 vote, or?
Sure.
All right. Let's add John in as a, as voting, okay?
I assume the vote was to approve it.
It was.
There.
There's a luncheon.
There you go. Very good. Okay, so we will do that. Thank you, Bridget.
All right, thank you.
Coming and sitting through all of our investment policy.
I'm reading news.
Hope you learned something. All right, people, let's see. What else can we pick up for quick business here?
I move to accept the resignations of Mark Manchino, Southampton Public Safety Building Committee, effective November 13th, 2024. Resignation of Cynthia McBane, Council on Aging Board, effective 11/6/2024.
Okay. Let's take the two resignations first. We have a motion, can we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then reappointments?
Motion to move the reappointment of Robert Ziembah.
Ziembah?
Ziembah. Cultural Council, three-year term to expire 6/30/2027, and Dean McFadzen.
Yeah, I think it might be Deanna McFadzen, but.
Fadzen, oh, Dean, yeah. Cultural Council, three-year term to expire 6/30/2027.
Okay, we have a motion. Second by Cindy. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. All right. Bradley, you're probably gonna be a little bit longer. How about if I jump over to Scott with your report?
Yep.
Try to get a couple of smaller things done here first. Not that they're small, I mean to say small. They're very important.
Some things are, some things aren't.
Thank you.
It's okay.
So I was able to meet with Dreamers Cannabis, so we were gonna have a host agreement ready in probably a couple of weeks, and they're amenable to coming in and, and talking to the select board. So we're gonna try to schedule that, considering November's now almost over. Maybe early, later December, early January, hopefully. The Green Energy Grant, the lighting project's been completed, although we did have one light out in COA today I gotta come back and fix. But, so that's all done for the, the town hall, library, and police station. And now we're just, we have to finish up with the Norris control, so hopefully that's, we're gonna be doing that in a couple of weeks over winter break. We have a new concrete pad, big announcement.
Yes, yeah.
It's actually paver, so.
Looks really nice, huh?
Looks really nice.
All credit goes to Judy and Randall on that one. I didn't have any, any input on picking it out or anything like that, so.
Yeah, looks good.
We had our online budgeting all-board meeting a couple of weeks ago. Judy is slowly closing the budget deficit by selling off all the old access equipment. She's up to almost $10,000.
Wow.
So not only are we getting rid of the old equipment, but we're, we're having plenty of space now, so.
So I'm assuming that a lot of this is vehicle-related, more so than computer-related?
Yeah, the trucks, we got a few big, big bids on. Yeah, all the computers, stuff's like $25, stuff like that, so.
Well, that'd be good.
So a question on that, the, the receipts coming in, the $9,000 and change coming in, how can, how does that get utilized? Does that have to be closed out to the general fund, certified free cash and appropriated next year, or can we use it to pay the recycling fees of the 4,500 computer monitors there down the basement?
The first one, but I would like to get to the second one eventually.
All right.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'd like to get a dumpster for town hall out of that money, too, so. We're gonna be having a sewer feasibility study, meeting with Time Bond next week on December 5th. I've included that in the package as well. A lot of fun reading for Thanksgiving.
It's very good product. Thank you.
And we have a tentative agreement with between the town and Local 98 that I'm hoping to have a draft in the way for next meeting.
Yeah, good question. Yeah, go ahead.
So Scott, you mentioned a dumpster for town hall. I do know that the Board of Assessors, especially, not the board, the employees in the assessor's office have worked really hard to determine what could be, you know, possibly recycled.
Yep.
So be sure and give us a good upfront timing on that, because.
Oh, yeah, it won't be till spring, but.
We have a person that works really hard on that, and we have, we have stuff in the basement, too, that.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, there's a lot of.
Is it spring? Is that what you're?
Hopefully, yeah. I don't think we're gonna be able to make it through the winter, so. We have a lot of old stuff that just kinda is hanging around.
This is true, yes.
It'd be cheaper to get a dumpster than to have Randall use his person hours to go back and forth, so.
Right. Okay. All right, folks. Well.
Can we, can we act as if it's 7:30 and start the public hearing?
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking, anybody else, I was just about to say, anybody else who was maybe gonna come for this, I can't imagine that they're gonna come in at 7:29, so let us go ahead and let us have a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to reopen the public hearing of Ever Source and Verizon New England Incorporated Poll Hearing located at 33 Manhoun Road for the purposes of requesting permission to erect a line of poles installed underground conduits and cables, reason being that the new primary cable will be used to provide service to 33 Manhoun Road. The current service to be the home is from the right-of-way and is currently an aerial trespass determination of the planning board as 11/6/2024 has been forwarded to the select board.
Second.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Okay, so we have the, have it open? Do we need to vote on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. We'll declare the hearing open at 7:26. Jason, you wanna come back up for us? Thank you for waiting, and all the residents from Manhan Road area. Appreciate it. So give us a little update. I guess you went to planning board in the meantime since we saw you?
Correct.
Okay, wanna give us the rundown there?
I believe they said that everything would be okay with them as long as we don't damage any walls or trees.
Yep. Okay. I'm on the planning board, so just reiterating that. And so just to reiterate, so this is no longer installing a line of poles, it's going to be just an underground conduit from one existing pole, and you're putting in one new pole down toward 33 Manhoun, is that right?
We're putting in a new pole at the beginning of the right-of-way, we're removing a pole in front of 33 Manhoun and installing a pad mount transformer.
Okay, all right, all right, and we have a note here from Paul Dimon, the Chair of the Planning Board, saying that they have looked at it through the scenic roads chapter and bylaw, and EverSource has certified that no trees or stone walls will be disturbed during the trenching, and that the planning board had no, no objection to it, they didn't feel that they had total jurisdiction on it because it wasn't doing anything with that, and we don't have a town bylaw yet, but the town bylaw committee will be working on one for scenic roads. So with that, does anybody have any comments or questions, anything, yeah?
I'm just, is everybody in agreement that, not here, is everybody in agreement?
Yeah, we can have a moment of comment from residents that are here, somebody would like to speak for it, and then somebody would like to speak against it, that's the way we usually do it.
Justin Violette, I live at 34 Manhoun Road, so I attended the planning board meeting, which as a resident is very disappointing, as a taxpayer and a ratepayer, I witnessed a fight between two board members. It was also brought to my attention that one of the board members that is in this room resigned that day as they stomped out, and.
Let's talk about the topic.
Right, so what that is, though, because that was the topic for the day.
Okay.
And that board member's been one of the people in these meetings that has been directing and driving a lot of things going on. So with that, though, I've been to a lot of these town meetings, being on the other side, as I used to work for EverSource as a manager of gas construction, not seeing the town really backing the residents. There was other residents initially that were opposed to the poles being erected on the street, until they later then saw what it looked like when you actually went up the road.
Mm-hmm.
And then with that, how these scenic roads are treated in town, and by that, I mean, they're not, they don't seem to equally be treated, and even just upon Manhoun Road. So on Manhoun Road, EverSource went from having poles above ground to now they're going to trench. Our road, I don't know if anybody's measured it, I measured it today, not very wide, I'd really love to see the plan for getting us through, seems there's only one way in. There's a right-of-way that still exists on two of those properties, so if Southampton is so concerned about holding the value of a scenic road, and especially Manhoun Road, EverSource needs to put those poles back where they belong according to those two deeds, because that is the part I'm having a very hard time to understand. The town brings up, these are scenic roads, they pushed EverSource, they had original plan, then to go back to the drawing board, that's the ratepayers' money, because it's a scenic road, so I'll accept that, those poles will be in my, that yard, in my yard the rest of my life, and I'm fine with that, but it needs to be held equally, this is one very short road, if we're concerned about this being a scenic road and no trees being harmed and poles, then those poles need to go back in that right-of-way.
The statute, I believe, in the MGL talks about roads, sorry, trees and stone walls.
Correct.
And that is what.
So they have to do excess tree trimming now because of where these poles are, and they did this in the 90s, this isn't super old work, so if we are concerned with maintaining the beauty of this road, where more than half of the road has power lines on it, then those poles also need to get put back where they belong. If we're going to hold EverSource and make them rerun all these plans, it can't, I don't understand how it's both ways, that's kind of where I've started to not understand. And then Russellville Road, all this upgrade work was done, and then up into Montgomery, more scenic roads, where were all the meetings on this, and where?
I don't know, we can only act on what we have before us, we've had others come before us with scenic roads, and it's very clear, we have an MGL chapter to follow, there is no scenic road bylaw in town, even though we have adopted scenic roads at various town meetings going back to the 70s, okay? So what I just said earlier is that the bylaw committee, because of this coming forward, as well as some recent activity on East Street where trees were cut down erroneously and without proper notification of anybody in town office, there is more impetus now to create a bylaw which will have some teeth to it to enforce what a scenic road is about and what we do about them. So yes, there has not been much enforcement over the last 20 years, I agree with you.
So.
It doesn't mean that we have to continue that way.
Right, and I'm fine with that, it just has to be equal across town, not because certain people might live on a road.
Not picking on Manhoun Road.
But with that, looking at the permit, so our road is 18 foot six in a couple spots, the majority of it is 17 foot six, and it's a cliff off one side, it's an embankment on the other, that's extremely tight, how is EverSource going to trench a road?
Okay.
And get us up and down the road, so how can we approve such a plan to move forward?
Okay, well, I don't know what happened with the planning board, but I assume you also, come on up, Jason, you also had talked to, I believe, our highway superintendent at one point in time, and showed him what you were planning on doing, if I'm not mistaken?
That is correct.
So fill us in a little bit, I know you're, you're very frustrated with this, I get it, we are too, let's get it done tonight, please.
I agree.
Let's figure it out.
I reached out to the Hadley office, the Hadley overhead supervisor is working with the superintendent of highways on the plan to, to install the conduit.
Okay.
I was told they already submitted a permit, I don't know if it's true or not, I don't work in the Hadley office, but that's what I was given.
So Chris, can we break this down a little bit, so, at least, I didn't attend the planning board meeting, but my understanding from what I read is the planning board ruled that it was outside their jurisdiction.
Because no trees and walls were being disturbed.
Strictly based on those two issues, no tree impact.
Correct.
No stone wall, said it's outside, and they kicked it back to here.
Correct.
The primary reason, and anybody can speak to this, but the, the primary cause that triggered this was the, was, I believe, the, the acknowledgement that there was an aerial trespass happening.
That is correct.
In addition, in addition to that, because of that, one or multiple landowners would also like, A, for that issue to be resolved, but B, and this is where, I haven't gone up and done a visual, but I think the poles running through what I'll call the backyards, that they feel that that's part, phase two, so if you're going to fix the overhang, fix that as well, right? Okay, and then, and then to your previous comments that you just made, is if they're going to, if they're going to fix the overhang, let's go the whole way and fix the back piece as well, which, whether or not that can be accomplished or not, I don't know, but if the solution was, fix that whole thing, money wasn't an object, bury the whole thing, and the road would support it, would everyone be okay with that? And then the, so the other question that I don't know, that maybe, those lines running in the back are not residential lines, I'll call, they're, they're of more power for the.
They're, they're primary.
Is that even something that could be buried?
That, does a delta line, so no, they couldn't bury delta, they'd have to convert it back to Y in order to put it in the ground, that's not the route they're trying to go right now.
Right, so leaving it as, leaving it as a, for the power source, the only way to fix that would be move all those poles up, scenic road.
Correct, and I was informed by our office, our land use department, they have no intention on relinquishing the right-of-way that they currently obtain, so.
So phase one, eliminate the overhead, the aerial overpass, ever, I'm assuming everyone's okay with making that happen.
By doing the conduit, right.
The question is, can, can the property owners leverage that to solve the second piece, which is get rid of the backyard poles, right?
Which can't be done.
Whether it's possible or not, that's the argument that's being made.
It can't be, quid pro quo, like that, that can't be done.
Okay, all right, does anybody else from the audience have anything to say?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Without belaboring this, David Corey, former road, thank you, because that clarified a bunch of things. Years ago, the utility company ran through private property, it was easier to do, there was only probably one or two landowners, my parents being one of them after the fact. The utility company in several places in the town of Southampton has taken power lines from private property, relinquished easements, I believe, and moved them to the street. They had the opportunity to do this in the 90s, and some individuals, I don't know who what, did not want the power poles put in front of their houses, they ran on private property, the utility company did in fact move several of those. Montgomery is a much more recent example, the utility company seems to have a, a method of, or a policy, I should say, of moving utilities from private property and easements, which my grandfather granted years ago also, to the street. They did it on Montgomery Road, I don't believe there was any pressure inflicted on them when they redid all the lines five, six, eight years ago, I've lost track, they took them from private property and moved them to the street. There's an opportunity here now for the utility company, for the town of Southampton, this was bypassed in the 90s, they started that work on Manhoun Road, and several individuals stopped it, they used the scenic road as an excuse, I'll use the word, to prevent them from cutting a couple of trees, which they wound up doing anyway, they took, my parents owned, I believe at the time, owned the property, possibly, I've lost track, and they took it up, that's what Justin was referring to. They have an opportunity now, instead of spending a whole bunch of money, I believe, my personal opinion is there's some politics involved in this, someone is preventing the utility company from moving it. Several officials in the, in the utility company that I spoke with personally said it was, it should be done, that this should be taken out of the backyard. Now that's not the responsibility of them now, they're just trying to avoid the aerial trespass, but there's going to be a bunch of work done, 50% of the trees on that road are dead anyway. The utility company would have to maintain the lines in the future, which takes care of pruning, and it would still have planning board oversight to take care of this, they can't cut stuff without permission, that's being set up for policy now, what, by law, however that's going to go. There's an opportunity, and you as the select board and us as the residents should be telling the, or talking with the utility company to try to get them to move the lines to the street. Again, this was started in the 90s, and it was, they did 50% of the road, and that they were stopped. This would be a moot point, none of this would exist, so in any event, there's a bunch of history with it in the utility company and whoever else is missing an opportunity here to rectify the whole situation.
Okay, well, that may be part two, can we get through part one tonight?
I hope so.
Okay, all right, all right, all right, could we have a motion? Oh, right.
Of course.
Sorry, one more person, sorry.
My name's Jesse Turgent, 22 Manhoun Road, and we, the neighbors, we all want the poles moved to the street, we all agree with it, maybe the planning board, if we all agree we wanted, then maybe the planning board would agree with us to push it on the road, and to push them to put it on the road, so everybody have power, the next new homes that get to be built there, new building lots will have access to power, we're still going to have the same issue if there's new homes going there, that the poles are going to be on private property and they still won't be able to build, you know? So maybe, should, now's the time, we can't speak to them because they won't talk to us, but they'll speak, they'll speak to you guys for sure, so we need you guys to step up for us and do this for us and get it done for us. We started this 30 years ago when I built the house there, so we need, you know, to push and get it done, right, for, you know, future neighbors that are going to move there. You can't, you know, that's what I have to say anyways.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right, so, we have a motion, Stan?
Oh yeah, I'd like to make a motion for Ever, to allow EverSource to install the electrical conduit on Manhoun Road for service of 33 Manhoun Road.
All right, we have a second.
Friendly amendment.
Okay.
In reliance on the assertion by EverSource that they would not affect trees or stone walls.
Yes, we can reference what they said at the planning board.
So, so we talked this round and round.
Yep, okay.
And we never got more than the verbal, I don't know who, there are all kinds of issues floating around here beyond the one that we're dealing with tonight, I'm not going to address that, but the key thing about what we have to do tonight is in reliance on assertion by EverSource.
Correct.
That places them outside the jurisdiction.
Correct, okay.
Is that assurance in written form, or are we just going to accept the verbal testimony?
We have that in the letter from the planning board, where they.
Based on their, their presentation at the planning board, then the planning board chair has given us, to us in writing, and I think that's all we're going to get.
The planning board chair put it in writing?
Yes.
So there's nothing in writing from EverSource?
We don't have anything from EverSource, the planning board.
Does the planning board?
I do not know.
We wrote it, we emailed the planning board saying we wouldn't damage any, damage or alter any trees or stone walls.
Okay, so let's say we have it in writing at the planning board.
So with that amendment, we're looking.
We have a second?
I think Stephen seconded, oh, I don't know who seconded it.
I'll second, but I.
Open for discussion.
Okay.
Question?
So somebody just said that 50% of the trees are dead, and maybe that's true, and I also think that power lines don't do well when dead trees fall over the top of them, so consequently, I hope that doesn't prevent this, this statement that EverSource came up with from removing dead trees or trees that are on, I mean, it's sort of a given that they're going to take care of trees that might fall on the, on the lines.
The line, this is going under the ground?
Oh, it's under the ground.
It's going underground, going underground.
Well, even that.
So the dead trees are a totally separate issue, all we're voting on is allowing them to do the trenching, put the conduit in underground, that's all we're voting on tonight.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right, any further questions?
I appreciate that we've got a full room here tonight for this hearing, that was not the case for the planning board discussion, and I'm quite, you know, as an elected representative, I'm quite concerned that there's a diversity of goals that are being sought, and we have only been presented with one thing on which we can act, and, and it's very frustrating that, if you'll allow me, the tail is wagging the dog, it's a very imperfect solution, because each one of you would design something a little bit different, I'm very sensitive to that, and I fundamentally reject that there's anything personal about this, I have the public interest in mind.
You.
I have the public interest in mind, and I have no idea what the ideal solution would be, there's a process that needs some more work, it's outside of what our jurisdiction is. Thank you.
Well, I would just, before you call for the vote, I would just say that, from my point of view, a vote in favor of this is saying, let's just resolve the aerial trespass and then let everything else go the way it is, this is the last stop, if we deny this request for lack of options, then additional options have to come back to us, and I sat here as a select board member two and a half years ago when the, when the public, I forget his title, but he's the public relations person for EverSource, came before us, and we had a discussion about creating a bylaw that going forward, all developments had to have underground wiring to ensure power connections, and he sat right there, or stood right there and said, we will never support that, and at the very next meeting, we moved forward with our own municipal electric process. Now, half the board was doing it under the disguise of fiber, the other half was, let's control our own destiny, so if we support this, which is great, it eliminates the, the overhang, and the, but then that stops all discussion, and we won't have, we will not be permitted additional discussion about the phase two, right, because this is the only tool in our arsenal.
Yeah, this is the only, the only subject.
We can, we can pass an order ordering Mike Kane to come before us as the public relations guy for, and the former state rep, but, you know, it's just going to be public talk, and, and it's not, it's not this representative's issue, because where's the supervisor, where's the district manager? You know, he's in discussions with the superintendent, he or she has never been here, so.
Jason?
The whole purpose of this petition is to relocate an aerial trespass.
Yeah.
There is no phase two. We, EverSource, purchased rights to that land, to use that land to put the poles there and carry wires. It seems, maybe I'm wrong, it seems like people are trying to force the utilities hand to give up something they purchased, to move the poles to the public way at the ratepayers' expense, on a street where we'd have to take down a whole lot of trees, a road that you guys are already saying is, is a scenic road, that that's not what we're here to discuss, we're not here to discuss moving the right-of-way, we are here to discuss if you're going to give us permission to alleviate the aerial trespass by installing two conduits, one wire, from point A to point B.
I agree, I agree with you, but again, as five people representing 6,700 people.
Yep, I didn't, it's only one of me.
And they're here, I mean, if it wasn't for this issue, the last three meetings, we wouldn't have had anybody present for our public sessions.
Is there, is there a way to take action on what's before us tonight, but then also try to request a meeting with whomever at the district level to come before us, or have him, a subcommittee meeting with the district level person, one or two of us from select board, and a couple of the residents that would like to attend?
And I guess that's what I'm saying, Chris, is if, if this passes, the motion that's on the floor right now, if it passes as a select board, that should not be the end of our story.
I understand.
Because clearly.
There's other issues.
There's other issues that need to be addressed inside, and, you know, I see EverSource, EverSource's point of view, I see the citizens' point of view, you know, and we lucky five that sit here for three years at zero compensation are stuck in the middle.
Yeah, no, it's true, but I think that would be maybe a possibility, but let's, one more comment, and then we're going to take a vote on this, and then we may take another motion.
So John, I appreciate, and Stephen, what you've both said tonight, as being the resident that has the aerial trespass, I have no issue with waiting, I'm not going anywhere, I have two young children that are here, I plan on retiring in Southampton and being here the rest of my life. My idea is, though, the money that's being spent by EverSource, which is all of our money as the ratepayers, to do a project that is like this tiny little Band-Aid when there's all this other work that needs to be done. As I mentioned before, the poles going forward from where they moved the power lines originally are from the 50s, and they've both been heavily damaged by large pine trees falling on them, snapped guy wires, everything. There's more pine trees that are going to come down on my property that EverSource is not cutting, and I'm definitely not paying to cut them, but they're outside of their 10-foot right-of-way. The other thing with that right-of-way that they have, because of how old this easement is, they have no way to access it with a vehicle. It abuts Hoyokes property and went into the road, and there is a stone wall in the way on the other end, and they are no longer welcome to come up my driveway to get to their power lines that are over 250 feet away from the road, so you're not even reaching it with a bucket truck. So from a safety standpoint, because they destroyed my driveway, they've destroyed my yard, they've cut trees well outside of their tolerance zone, because it's only 10 feet, not 18, like their rules require, so that is essentially where we're at, and I do appreciate John and Stephen seeing that, and if it means holding them up from moving this aerial trespass to get EverSource to come here and show us a comparison of price of what it's going to cost to put this thing underground. underground or move these poles. The resident that, that's at thirty-three, they have seven acres. We've all seen Southampton, people are gonna build houses. That's seven acres Southampton's gonna lose tax dollars on in the future of somebody building a home. Because how are you gonna get power to those when they're only gonna run one line? There's no other way to get there.
Did this all not start because of an aerial trespass?
Well, I think there was a fire.
Well, it's, so, and it's been a long time coming, so I've tried to get Eversource to come out. And, so when the tree fell on the lines, it took me, now I worked at Eversource at the time, mind you. It took me multiple phone calls and every time, because the power was still on, and then the person would tell me, "Oh, yeah, no, it's all set." And I was like, "No, it's not." Finally, I went and got somebody after making some calls, and they were like, "Oh, my goodness. This is still here?" And it was almost, it was almost five days that it sat there. And again, because you can't see it from the road, every single person's like, "Lights on, lights on, lights on." Away they go. Because you can't see those power lines. And it's right in front of my front door where I walk outside, my kids walk outside.
Okay.
I have a question for the board before we vote, please.
Okay.
Not a comment.
Last comment.
Not a comment. Question?
Question.
I saw the permit that's issued by the town. There's no time limits or anything else on this or access. Like Justin said, this road seventeen, eighteen feet wide. There's nothing in there as, how the road will be blocked or anything else or what work conditions. So, if the board issues this, there's nothing on that permit says they can't block the road so that we can't get in and out of there for how long? I don't know. So, just a thought. And, there was no, nothing political about this board that I know of. The comment was made for something from thirty years ago and continuing somewhere else. Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, John?
So, I just wanna get something clear in my head. So, the, the permit, the permit to do this work, which is on the table to be voted on-
Right. We have a motion and a second on the table.
Right. But-
With an amendment?
Yup. As amended. But concurrently, whatever the title of the person that Eversource is, the director, is currently working with our highway superintendent to ensure-
That's what we understood.
That, that the super, our highway superintendent ultimately endorses the road, the plan which would then spell out in theory closure, opening one lane. That piece is ongoing at the moment.
Correct. We don't have, we don't have any information on that unless you do.
So, I guess, I, I would, the maker of the motion, if potentially they would add a third paragraph that says this is only approved upon the highway superintendent's signature.
But that's, they can't trench a road without the highway superintendent's signature.
They have it.
But you can be, okay.
That permit's issued, but there's no time constraints on it or conditions.
Or the, and how it's gonna actually be done or how long it's gonna take.
That's fine. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna vote against it anyway, so you can leave the motion the way it is.
I think that, I wouldn't put, actually, I would leave that up to the highway superintendent. That's his, his remit, right? Determining what restrictions and safety concerns have to be put on that and be established.
Right. And I, and I would just say as an overworked department head, they're gonna take the least course of action. If it's not written and directed by this board, they're appointed in authority, they're not gonna take the extra steps.
Exactly.
But-
So, before we take a vote on this-
I almost wanna hear the motion read back. The very first part, I, I don't believe we're issuing any permit.
We are not, no.
We are endorsing the finding of the planning board-
Correct.
That we have no authority under the scenic road MGL.
Right. And then us, so that is what-
Based on the assertion of Eversource that they would not do anything that the law-
Not do any damage to stone walls, stone walls and trees.
So, the motion, the motion is only to accept the planning board's findings, period?
That it's out of the jurisdiction.
And then there, then there would have to be another motion afterwards, right? Is that what you just said, Stephen?
Well, we are, my, my motion was to give Eversource the permission, they've requested to install the conduit on-
Right. He's approving the whole plan.
Because they had gone to planning board, but we do not know-
But the motion is to approve the plan.
The plan to put the conduit down and put the wire to that pole for thirty-three, thirty-four Manhand Road. We do not have details about the trenching, the permit, how long it will take access to the road.
And that's our responsibility to approve that. In all cases, Eversource doesn't really have to come and ask for our permission to do this. They do this as part of, I guess, their policy to reach out to the, to the towns that they interact with for these things. So, this isn't something that they necessarily have to get our permission to do.
Right. No, and we understand that they're working with the highway superintendent, the district person is working with it. So, that's, that's one layer. But then we had talked about other outstanding issues here-
Yes.
That need to be addressed. So, I guess my question is, well, we have a motion.
The work cannot happen unless this motion passes. We can, I mean, we could table it, we could vote it down, they can't do it, Eversource cannot move forward without an affirmative vote of the motion that's on the table right now.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Right. And that, that motion does not take into account some of the other residents' concerns about dead trees, moving poles, all of those kinds of things, and the use of taxpayer money to do this particular job.
Right. Nor does it take into account any written assertion from the highway superintendent on his view on this. It's only verbally been responded to us, even though the highway superintendent is a direct report to this board.
Yeah. We do not have that. I don't know if he's talked to you, Scott, about this at all?
Yeah, I've been, I've been going back for Randall today, so I think we just found out they were actually going to mow under the road. I thought they were gonna be cutting the pavement, but Randall does have some restrictions that he's gonna be placing on that. So.
So, again, I would say suggest that the mission, the motion be amended to incorporate any restrictions or modifications that the highway superintendent deems appropriate.
Okay. So, we have another-
I've only suggested, I'm not making it as an amendment.
That's happening anyways. It has to happen.
But it's not, it's not formally-
Not unless we say yes.
Unless we say it has to happen.
Kind of incorporating that, those words.
But that's subject to us saying yes.
Yeah.
I'm asking Randall right now.
So, if we say, if we say no or we don't take the vote, it's a moot point.
Yeah. Yeah. So, no, I think, I think, no, we need to just decide here.
Okay.
So, what do we want? Do we wanna take the vote? Do we wanna table it? I'm hearing all sorts of things here.
I gotta tell you, I am confused. I am absolutely confused about how to be a good select board member and represent our community right now. It's feeling very strange to me.
I, I would say that direction needs to come from the maker of the motion.
Okay. Let us, let us take a vote unless the person who made the motion wants to change his motion. Assuming not, let us take a vote. We have a motion on the table and a second.
I would like to change my motion to all, to add an amendment that we will require the, the wording as suggested by John for the highway superintendent.
Incorporate the recommendations of the superintendent, highway superintendent. Yep.
Okay. So, we have that on the table now? All right. Can we take a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Dan? Yes? Anybody else?
I know I seconded it, but I don't-
All those opposed?
No.
I'm gonna abstain.
Abstain one, Stephen?
I'm gonna abstain. I, I think we're on a wrong course here. And I just, it's not clear how the select board has the authority to fix it. I appreciate John's attempts. It's, here we are.
So, we have, we have, we have a yes, a no. Abstain, abstain. My vote is a no. So, we have one yes, two noes, and two abstentions. Okay? At this point in time.
So, it fails to pass?
This fails right now, but let us-
So, can I ask, can I ask-
Take Plan B forward, whatever.
Jason, a question.
Certainly.
Who is the authority? Who, who, what is the name of the position or the person who could speak on behalf of Eversource?
Is it like a district?
That's what I'm here for. You're talking about our land rights person?
Our district manager or somebody.
Who's the district manager or who's, I mean, I know who the public relations officer is, but-
I'll have them reach out to you. Like, I don't wanna waste anybody else's time. I'll, I'll have our people reach out to your people and we'll figure it out from there.
Let's see if we could get a more holistic plan here, okay? I think we're generally looking somewhat favorably toward the conduit versus what you did, but I think we've got many other concerns by the-
But how can you force the utility company to relinquish rights on something? I understand that, but that's not what we were here to do.
Okay. We voted down the motion, so that's the end of that.
Yep. Cool.
Okay. Thank you. So, I think we would like to try to figure out a way to have some further discussion with residents, with some members of select board, not the entire select board, one or two people that would like to be involved in that, and whoever is the appropriate person at the district level from Eversource to talk about how can we solve the problem a little bit more broadly, more holistically if you will, to satisfy more than just one immediate need? And I think we've heard that tonight.
Well, so respectfully, I think whoever the district manager of Eversource is, that we, we should formally request in writing-
Yeah.
-a, a meeting with them. In addition-
I agree.
I would like the highway superintendent and the tree warden here for the meeting because other things that I'm hearing is that a majority of these tree, and honestly, I'm gonna have to take a ride up there this weekend, that majority of these trees are in ill-fated health, which is a reoccurring theme that we've heard. And, that's on us. We don't need to, we should not be relying on Eversource to clean up our trees. So, if there's a separate, if there's a separate appropriation or things need to be happened, let's get all the facts and figures on the record, develop a plan. I under, I respect Jason's point of view that from his, his stance, you know, we can't force Eversource to move it, and he's probably right from a legal point, but we can certainly force a public discussion-
Discussion, that's all we're trying to do.
On the record and writing.
That's all we're trying to do.
And, and to that extent, I would suggest that we, for, to avoid additional cost, that we pick a date sixty days out and continue this hearing to avoid public advertising.
Yeah, I'm gonna say with the holidays and everything coming up, I'm gonna say sometime in January that we would take a look at one of our January meetings.
And the meeting with the district person from Eversource and all that doesn't need to be part of the official poll hearing, so we don't have to hold the vote there, but we can have a fact-finding evidentiary-based discussion to get to the root of this, try to develop a path. And honestly, part of this is gonna be on the taxpayer's health, they have to, not necessarily Eversource. We're using this as the, the hammer to get them to the table, but there's a, I think there's a bigger conversation needs to happen.
Sure. Okay. No, that's fine. All right. So, with that, I think we need to actually formally close the public hearing, please?
I have to.
No, last more one thing, please? Are we done?
Not really. Just one minute. That's where the politics comes in.
We voted.
Jason doesn't even want-
I think he, I think-
I think we're done. I think we're done.
Okay.
I think we're done.
Is there a time to, to bring this up for the select boards that take five minutes at the outside? Now, it doesn't have to be now.
Not tonight. Not tonight.
You'd be able to, at a public, at a, a public meeting of the select board, public session when it's not on the agenda?
Citizen speak, you have time at the beginning of a meeting? Anytime? Yeah?
Motion to, motion to adjourn-
Close. Adjourn whatever.
You don't wanna close, do you? We wanna keep it open. To adjourn this portion of the poll hearing for future, well, we took a vote, it didn't pass.
Right.
So, I say keep the public hearing open, push it out sixty days. In those sixty days, let's have these meetings and potentially-
Okay.
Come up with a solution.
That's fair.
Because otherwise, you have to post in the paper and-
True. Okay. That's a point. Valid. Okay. We don't have a date for our January meeting, however?
Five meetings from tonight.
Five meetings from tonight?
Whatever date that is. It'll be January something.
All right. Let's try that one. All right. Got that, Scott? All right. So, we have a motion on floor?
Second.
All right. So, the public hearing will be continued to five meetings from tonight, and in the interim, we will do our best to gather all the interested parties and have some discussion. Okay?
Right. But by written formal request.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. And we'll have the town administrator reach out and do a letter out of Eversource. Okay. With that, all those in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any pose? No. All right. So, that passes. Okay. I think we're done, guys. Thank you very much for your input.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. All righty.
Bradley, you sure you wanna go next?
I don't know, Bradley. Yeah. Why don't you come on up, Bradley? What else you got for us? We'll let you.
Jesus.
Something that sounded like it was fairly-
Ya think?
Whatever, at the beginning, and it got more complicated every meeting we talked to, I think, here. to, I think, here. But, all right, Bradley, come on up. Town accountant, go for it.
Bradley Oxon, town accountant. This is my department update. So my current priorities are closing fiscal year '24 and the tax rate recap that I need to input data with the assessors department and town clerk and some other departments help out to get our tax rate set. I forget what the deadline is, but I know it's in December. So with the fiscal year '24 close.
How close are we to closing out? What do we need to do? Because you've got paperwork to file at state level, right?
Yep. So we need to reconcile cash every month. Jen and I, Jen, the treasurer, we're up through June. We had two small, I believe they're voided checks, something that were on my books, but were on her cash activity. So we need to reconcile those, but pretty much done with cash. Receivables, we didn't reconcile month by month. We're reconciling each tax portion of water, motor vehicle, personal property, doing it all one year at a time. So I did get new receivable reconciliation files from the treasurer's department today that I need to look at, and we're working our way through that. I'm finding that I'm missing commitments, I'm missing abatement reports from certain departments that I need to get before I can match the treasurer's numbers. So after that, I need to investigate deficits to make sure we're not having big deficits on our books and going to get a free cash number, and then our free cash number is deducted for those deficits. And, well, the last fiscal year, I had issues with the school accounts, so I need to reach out to the school, make sure that they're cohesive with our data, if they match their books. So I'm gonna do that sooner than I did last time. And I need to work with Scott on the indirect cost. So we set an indirect cost for both our enterprise funds, water and transfer station. We set a number, and then there's this huge calculation once the year is over to make sure that indirect costs of all their benefits and other small little costs that come from the general fund, they pay their portion, but we need an accurate number, which we haven't really done.
And that that indirect cost really covers what they ship.
Yes, we don't wanna overcharge them or undercharge them. So I need to help with that because it's always been way too complicated for me to understand. It's this big file, and it just seems too complicated for what we're doing.
So, just Bradley, on that point, so as you work with Scott on this, is the goal to reduce to writing or something? So somebody, because I think you came into this with like, here's a number, no real explanation as to how we get there and that, and you're working towards an outcome of, let's explain this in written writing so the next person could just kinda walk through it. Is that the goal?
To me, it seemed like we were just going off of last year's number every year. We're just, oh, it's too hard to get this number, so let's just use last year's number, and then.
So there'll be a procedure or workflow to justify it?
A written procedure, maybe a written finance procedure, which would probably help us too with the auditor, I would imagine, to have a few more things written down.
There is a standard for indirect costs to calculate. I think that we haven't really updated it or looked at it for a while. So that's one of the things that we started to do last budget cycle, we just didn't have enough time to actually do it. So, a big one is obviously with water department.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good.
So fiscal year '24 close and tax rate recap right now is my priority. There's also maybe fiscal year '23 audit, things still coming my way. They haven't talked to me in a while, but if they do come up, I will address them.
Okay.
Going with fiscal year '25's budget, my department, we're doing just fine. My town accountant expenses has $1,072 available, which is just fine. I don't have big expenses other than a $300 expense in March to go to educational programs for Massachusetts Municipal Accounting Auditors and whatever. There's a big, long acronym. I go courses every March at UMass to learn, take a test. And then, really, the only thing else in my budget is the independent audit, which is complicated that we don't have set in stone number for the audit. This past audit, we're still getting invoices for, so I had to dip into this current year's independent audit line item, which means that there's only $34,000 left over that we can encumber for the next audit, which we need to keep in mind when we're budgeting for fiscal year '26.
Do you know, because if we sign a commitment letter, it's X amount of money, if they're going above and beyond that, there must be extraordinary circumstances or billing that's occurring. Do we know why? Is it outside of the trigger for the federal audits?
Yeah, I believe those were things that they said, they would reach out to us and say, there's new requirements to tackle, and they need to charge us more money because they're doing this.
Didn't we sign, we signed the audit engagement letter for '25 with a price tag on it. Wasn't it $47,000 or something?
I believe it was 47.
I thought it was higher.
Forty-seven or forty-nine?
I thought it was 49 or something. Like, we budgeted for 47, but the engagement letter was higher. I'm quite sure.
I don't recall exactly, but.
So that's what you're saying is?
Because when we budgeted for fiscal year '25, we didn't have a number for the audit, so we just used the prior year's 47.
We did place up.
Okay.
I got you.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, and I couldn't find a contract, the three-year that we talked about earlier. I couldn't find that.
Okay.
Personnel updates. You may know that I've, we've hired an assistant town accountant, Tom Kennedy. He joined October 8th, 2024. I've trained him on just about everything I do, in case I'm incapacitated in some way. He's.
Or take a vacation.
Or take a day off.
More likely, I'll be incapacitated.
Planning a good holiday.
Everybody's laughing at me. Okay, yeah, I trained him. He's there, he's ready to learn, he's helpful. Big thing I've gotten him to do is review revenues, which is a big thing that I know everyone's eager to get up to date.
Yes.
And I feel it was more on me to explain why it was behind. It's really, we have a new software, it's just different than the last software, and it took me a long time to figure out how to review the tax postings. It's just a automated system, the money comes in, we have to code it specifically, so every time this type of meter charge comes in, it goes to this account. Jen finds these postings, makes a batch, sends it to me, and it's hard to review based on the documents I have compared to when we had the old software. It was easy, one-to-one. Now it's, I'm going to wait till all the tax postings have been brought over from the treasurer, and then I can run a report for everything in that month and see all the batch numbers, then I can get them. So I figured that out with Jen's help. So now, I know how to review everything. I've taught my assistant how to do it. I think we're on a good pace now. Jen has, I think she has all of September ready for us, and we've gone through all the easy packets, and then it's just reviewing all the revenues. So I think we're well on our way to getting up to date.
Okay, good.
Great.
And I know we had seen a memo, I think Scott, you'd sent us around, something that you and Scott and Jen had sat down and agreed with revenues and when they were gonna be caught up to and so forth. So thank you for that, and I hope we can keep to that schedule.
Yep.
Okay, good.
So, yeah, that's one thing that Tom has been very helpful with, is I have three responsibilities to do. Sometimes I would let the revenues go until a Friday when I had nothing else to do. So now, when he's sitting there doing nothing, I can say, review revenue.
For sure, yeah.
If he's not doing anything, I have stuff for him.
Yeah, right.
Yes, that's another thing.
Does he need any further training outside of you? I mean, you mentioned courses that you take at UMass, but is there something that would be appropriate for him to attend or a DLS course, or, I mean, I don't know.
I can talk to him about that.
If there's anything that is appropriate for him to learn that could help out, take the load off of you and just share the workload a little bit easier, if it's there. I think we would probably welcome that idea, if that's there. But, because I think what's gonna be coming at you fairly soon, if it hasn't done much already, is gonna be procurement stuff. I mean, we've got lots of, lots of things coming down the pike, I think, with, you know, a variety of contracts that we would like to get done. And as our procurement officer, I think that will be keeping you busy with scopes of work and RFPs and so forth.
OPMs, yep.
Yeah. So in the new year, I think that's gonna be a big chunk of what you'll see from this end of the table, I think. But, yeah. Good. Anything else?
Yeah, just plans and events for the next six months, closing fiscal year '24, my education program in March.
Yep.
I still wanna organize and remove documents from the accounting office. There's a lot of big packs of paper that are older than I am and are dusty, and I sneeze in there. My shredder is broken, so I can't shred them.
Well, we may have to have a shredder day here for town papers in general.
That's something that's always on my mind, is.
I know the fire department has the valley shred people come up on a regular basis or Valley Green, whomever they are. I don't know why we couldn't extend that to a shred day for town hall. Once we determine.
Anyone for December, January.
Yeah.
To double check with it.
Determine what is possible to be shredded and disposed of, yeah, per regulations, but yeah.
Yes, I do have destruction approvals for certain accounts payable invoices.
Right.
So I have that ready. Scott mentioned that, yes, I could send my assistant to help other departments when he is just sitting there and we're up to date with revenues.
Yep.
So that's a possibility. And the final thing is my three-year contract expired on September 27th.
Yes.
So I would.
We're getting closer and closer with the compensation plan, so that will be coming up very soon to get that taken care of.
So that naturally leads into a question, three years in, how you feeling?
Well, compared to my previous job, I'm happier because I feel that I'm contributing to something, and I'm seeing progress. I'm seeing the police chief, I'm seeing the fire chief, I'm seeing them, and talking to them is more rewarding than I, any job I've ever had.
Good, glad to hear that.
So if we're successful in giving you a good contract, you're willing to stay on for another three years?
Yes.
Good answer.
Very good. And what is your, I mean, if you know off the top of your head, what is your first deadline to file? And don't we have to file for Schedule A sometime?
Probably November 30th.
For cash?
I think it's November 30th, and that's not going to happen, unfortunately.
But we'll still beat last year's record.
Yes.
Can we be fairly close to it?
Yeah, last year's record was hours before town meetings.
I know, we can't, we can't do that again, please. We cannot.
That's why I'll be more proactive with getting the school on board and seeing how to fix any deficits.
Right, okay.
Anything you need from the assessors or the board to help with establishing, you said the tax rate or?
Yeah, I'm going to reach out on Monday to tell the assessors' office where I am and where I need help.
Okay, the board of assessors meeting on Tuesday, just, I'm not sure the board is as helpful as the principal assessor, but let us know.
Very good.
I do think, though, you know, at least from my spot on the board, you know, Bradley, who was involved with your hiring three years ago, you know, you've come over a big mountain, there's more, a bigger mountain to climb, but you've got your staff on, right? And I think, at least all reports that I'm hearing by the board is, the internal finance committee is working well together, they're regularly meeting and talking and communicating, and from my point of view, I'm seeing forward progress. You know, of course, as the business guy, I'd like it all to be resolved right away, but, you know, we're making forward progress, and it's getting better, and we're beating, we may not be meeting the deadlines of filing, but we're beating last year's deadline filing. So if we can just continue that process over time, we're eventually gonna right the ship, and I, for one, am glad that you're willing to stick around for another three years.
No, absolutely, yeah. And I think too, you know, in all fairness too, we threw a little bit of a monkey wrench in the works by putting in new financial software, right? Which has taken probably more time than we had even anticipated for people to learn and get really comfortable with that. And yet, the overall hope is that by doing that, that it's gonna give us a much more efficient process on your end, but it's also gonna give the select board a lot more information in real time, so that we understand, you know, how we're making good decisions on how we spend the money in town. So that is the long-term goal still, and I'm hoping that we will, you know, sort of reap the benefits of that a few months from now, as that becomes clearer. Dan?
Yeah, a question. I know that elementary school is the largest part of our budget, it seems like the most complicated thing for you to have this input. Is there any conversations or guidance we could have with the school to somehow help them present the data to you in a way that would make your life easier? Or you mentioned your assistant may have some extra time. I don't know if that would be overstepping his bounds to volunteer him to help them in some way such that it makes your job easier to get the data ready for your input?
Utilizing my assistant is definitely a possibility. It's really, they have a lot of turnover in the past few years and things like that, but I remember we were way behind last year in getting their reconciliation, their accounts to our accounts. And all I needed to do was send them the file I sent them last year of, we had a file that had their numbers, like their account numbers compared to our account numbers. And it was simple, this column, this row, and I just sent that to them, and then they said, oh, that makes everything so much easier. So I think if we send something similar again and just show them, here's our numbers for this account, and this is how it compares to your number, look at your number, does that match or does that not match, and then show them all the data in that account.
And are you in regular conversations, either through you or through Scott, with Don, the new business administrator or the assistant business, which I think only just started? But is there at least, have you seen an improvement in open communications between the school department and town office versus a year and a half ago?
We did meet in person recently, what was it, last month, and that was nice, but I think we need.
To keep pushing the issue.
Maybe a meeting, a phone call every month, just to.
Probably not a bad idea. I mean, as the largest town, you know, contributing to the school system, I think we oughta.
Fifty-five cents on the dollar.
Yeah, we oughta at least touch base, you know, maybe that could be a regular kinda end of month, you know, where our things, and just get a sense of what maybe they're having trouble with, or what we're working on, and that would be maybe some good information to share. Okay, very good. Thanks, Bradley.
Well, not so fast. As the duly conscripted warrant clerk, I just wanna add my thanks. It's a pleasure working with you, and I second what all of my colleagues have said, and it spares me making a long speech.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Sorry, I didn't mean to slight you there. All right.
Scott will say something.
I do wanna thank Bradley for his work on getting the budget early this year.
Yeah.
And getting all that stuff done and changing the format. And if you want another nap after the turkey, the library actually has their budget already in there, so.
Oh, wow. Wow, wow, wow. That's amazing. Good.
So they get the award.
Very good, all right. Well, yeah, they need a separate little prize there for being the first in. But, no, I was about to add, actually, as we close out, that I'm really looking forward to seeing how this revised budget process and structure plays out this year, because I know we were, you know, not, haven't been, and I've been on the board five years now. It's never been a great process, and we've spent far too much time nickel-and-diming and trying to figure out where to, you know, borrow from Peter to pay Paul kinda thing on any account. And so I think we, hopefully, we'll have a much better understanding and a better budget narrative to go with it, which I think will be really, really important. So, thanks for all your work on that.
The last budget cycle, John saved us by showing that.
By doing the school one.
It doubled up the expense.
Yep.
So if we keep that in mind, I think it'll be.
I can't promise I can pull that out again.
At least I'm aware of that again, so that part won't happen again.
Yeah, jot that down, yeah, yeah, good. Thanks, Bradley, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Very good. All right. Okay, let's keep moving on. Anybody have something on select board reports? Any of your committee, just highlight information?
Okay, highlights. Open Space Committee has, I think I said this last time, we've been approached by a couple of landowners in town that are, it's kind of follow-up to the work we've done over the last several years, and some interesting conversations have begun, and some follow-up is required, and out of respect for their, you know, doing it in a confidential way, until we have some public information, I'm just gonna tell you, we're a busy committee. And the, let's see, that's all on that one. Board of Assessors, we have heard more than once, I have been approached personally, about whether or not we really understand everything related to the pilot project related to the Hoyok Waterworks, and bottom line, are we collecting the right amount of taxes. So we, the board, voted to engage an expert, a title examiner, and that person is gonna be supported by our administrative assistant, who's a paralegal, and you've heard me say that, and is very organized, to look through all documents and maybe even go to the registry of deeds and determine a bunch of things, and come up with questions we still can't answer. And so we are engaging somebody as on our contractor budget. And that's Barbara Webb. She was on the board. She left because of personal reasons, but she still works in the title examiner world, and has many years' experience and is eager to help us, and has given us a bit of a discount on her usual rate. So more to follow on that, but I want people to know that we have not ignored the request to figure out whether we're doing the right thing.
And what is she actually gonna look at, though?
Right.
Looking at a ream of documents, and it might include deeds, it might include other titles, when was lands acquired, and then reading some of the agreements that we've entered to over the years. All research has been done, but only partially done. We've heard this. I will say, Kathy McCall, our administrative assistant, discovered that there was a question about, how did we ever acquire XYZ property? And there was nothing in the regular file about that, but then when somebody else came in who had property next to that property, there it was, right in there, what the deed should've said or did say, and things that just were not always uncovered. It goes back to 1897, and there's a change in when you can tax for what property at what rate based on a law. Stephen tried to help a little bit when he was the select board liaison. Others have tried to help over the years. I'm really looking for a final definitive report, to the extent that we can possibly do it, or what we don't know and what else needs to be asked. And I've let Scott know, because I don't know if, over time, we'll need to get legal involvement to, you know, go back to Hoyok for some of this.
What is the belief right now of the anticipated cost?
Say this again?
What does the board believe their initial out-of-pocket cost to have this work done versus what they suspect they might be looking to recapture? I.e., are you gonna spend $10,000 to collect $500?
No, we're $40 an hour for about 20 to 40 hours. We're not sure.
Gotcha, okay.
It's not $10,000.
I was just, I was making up numbers there, but I was just, that's where I was going with it, yeah.
Yeah, thanks. We don't know what's gonna, we do know that there's this thing about stumpage fees. We don't know that we've ever collected stumpage fees for the fact that, yeah, I know, that the fact that.
A lot of stumps up there today.
There's a lot of stumps, and some of these stumps only became stumps in the last couple of years.
Yeah.
And some of them were stumps a long, long time ago, and probably never get the money on them. But we've got correspondence that sort of doesn't have answers to it.
No, I'm curious, you know, when the outcome comes up and what it is, I just, I guess I was just more curious what the initial cost would be.
You mean to hire this person?
Yeah, but $40 at 20, you know, maybe 20 hours to start, and then you reassess seems reasonable.
Just right on, right now, this is under the state-owned land line item, is that right?
No, a pilot with the Hoyok Gas and Electric is spelled out separately, and it had to be approved by the state legislature, so it's part of Mass. Journal Law Summer along the lines.
Gas and Electric, Hoyok Water Works.
His revenue.
Hoyok Waterworks, yes, I'm sorry.
Right.
Who, by the way, the general manager lives right here in town.
He do, and gee, I hope he's listening, because we're really trying to do the right thing, you know?
Yeah.
But in our, in our revenue report, is that not the state-owned?
Two different things.
Two different things?
No, state-owned land is land in town that's actually owned by the Commonwealth and/or fish and wildlife, or, you know, divisions of the Commonwealth, not.
And where do we see it in our revenue?
There's a, there's a separate pilot.
Yeah, where is it, the revenue report?
It's in the revenue, it's up on top, and it's, there's two pieces. One is the Hoyok Waterworks, and there's another, a budding municipality that pays a small fee.
Possibly Montgomery or Huntington or maybe West Hampton.
I'd have to ask the treasurer.
Well, anybody that wants to comment or ask questions or make sure we're following, doing the right thing, we're.
Yeah, I'm not catching it right now, but okay.
I think you're doing the right thing, having taken a look at it. It is ghastly complex.
Yes.
And it does involve deed research, I'm convinced, because the schedule of when and how it was acquired affects what you can collect.
Correct.
And it's really important to fairness across town, that every landowner pay their fair share.
That's the responsibility of the board of assessors, to make sure we're taxing people fairly and taxing entities fairly. So that's the quick report on that. As we get more information, I probably will ask for a time to present to the select board so that you understand what we discover, if we can, and we'll get questions from there.
Payments in lieu of taxes?
Yeah.
That's what pilot is, yeah.
Yep.
So just for revenue for last year.
Is it around $50,000?
$70,500.
Yeah.
Lot of acreage.
Yeah.
From state cherry sheet or from Hoyok Waterworks?
No, it's a bulk deposit, and the more I think about this, I suspect that Hoyok Gas and Electric does do something because they service county road portion.
Into town.
They have poles and that, and they have gas service. There's a portion of our town that has Hoyok Gas and Electric as their utility provider.
That I didn't even know. So should that be looked at too, John?
Well, I would just ask Jennifer or Bradley for the detail of what are the three or four deposits that make up that account.
So that's Hoyok Gas and Electric, okay. Okay, very good. And the final is the board of health, and they're incoming to report because they haven't met. They will meet again in a week.
Okay, all right. Dan?
Mine's easy. Just the technology committee is looking into a couple grants, which they've talked over with Scott, so he's aware of those that are coming up.
All right, technology grants, okay. Dan? I'm sorry, Dan, Stephen?
Nothing new since.
Nothing new since we last met. We get together frequently.
All right, John?
Local school committee had their, had their meeting and pretty much business as usual. And the, the two big things is we are, December 3rd will be the training session for the new improved security system enhancements that were done at the school. That's all moving along rather well and then continuing to work on the, the safe routes to school project through the master DLT. I met with, and PPPB met. Actually, it was very brief and I guess those items will come up at the next, at our next select board meeting.
Okay, very good.
That's it.
All right, great. And on my end, just a bunch of meetings scheduled, so bylaws will be meeting shortly. Master Plan is going to have its quarterly meeting in early December as well. And we have not had a quorum lately for the last couple of cost efficiencies meetings, so we're going to try to rectify that a little bit, but there's a subcommittee that is going to maybe work with Scott a little bit on the, the, hello? On our capital assets, yeah, capital assets for police and fire and water and highway in particular. And I guess that's about it. I'll get into the 250th.
Public safety building?
Public safety building committee met recently and right now we have our architects taking a look at how to reduce a little bit the footprint of what we had anticipated to be the, well, it was the first design anyway of the public safety building. They have or will be talking to both chiefs to understand how they think that they can make a few, few cost-saving measures. And they're going to take that as the lead and then be working on that over the next month, six weeks thereabouts, and get back to us on that. Senior Center Building Committee also has met and nothing new there. They've been talking about how to go about looking for an OPM, for example, and how to, you know, think about the kinds of information that we would need on that. So they're thinking ahead a little bit on that, but nothing, nothing definitive on anything right now. COA Board will be meeting very soon, I believe in the next week as well. So lots of, lots of meetings coming up that I seem to be involved in. Okay, moving on.
I do have one.
Yes.
It was a little weird how this came about, but the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is one of my liaison responsibilities. They sent me a notice about their executive committee meeting. It really doesn't involve me, but I did zoom in and it happened to be the night that they presented and approved the contract with Southampton for the 117, 125 College Highway. So I guess with the executive committee approval, we're ready to finalize that contract and see if we can not only get off to a quick start, but compress the timeframe that they initially proposed. But otherwise, I love, love that.
Great. All right. Good. Well, that kind of leads us into new business. So let me kind of go down through the list here. We've done the MLAPR, ARPA Fund status. We do still have a couple of questions and I need to do one more round probably with Jen and Bradley on this. But it looks like we still have got at least 50,000 that I think will be out there to reprogram. I don't personally think we're going to need all of that for wage adjustment. We do have a couple of other things, I think, from Scott's point of view, are coming up if you want to mention those briefly or?
So one of them is instituting the new permitting software. We got the quote in from, from Point Software. So there's a few things we have to work through and reach out to some of the different departments, but it should be around 10 to 13,000 dollars to implement that. And what that'll do is it'll have a completely online permitting system as well as approvals for the entire town. So if there is a building permit or assessors or health department issuing a permit, all the other committees and boards and departments would be aware of it and would have to sign off on it, so.
Circulates electronically?
Yeah.
Does that, does that include the validation of no back taxes owed?
Yes, the treasurer would be involved as well. So it'd involve licenses, treasurers, assessors, clerks, health, historical, planning, ZBA, building, obviously.
Lot.
Town administrator and maybe historical, but each one would have different levels of access. So historical wouldn't get everything, but they would get anything that would affect.
Probably Concom would have to weigh in if there was a wetland issue or once we have our scenic roads bylaw, et cetera.
Or at least be aware, even though they may not initially be an issue, that at least they would be aware that maybe Ron's issuing a building certificate and say, you know, and our Concom agent is saying, hey, wait, hold on, we might have some wetlands back there that no one thought about.
Yeah, I think it, it sounds like it would increase just transparency and communication, everybody being on the same page at the same time. I think that's our, part of our problem is we've had just delays in understanding something and, you know, and action has been taken and it's like, well, wait a minute, nobody came and, you know, got, you know, at least had a discussion with another, another department on that. So hopefully that would be one thing. So just, just to say, there's a couple of things like that that are coming up. And as we approach the 250th anniversary, I might try to also indulge the board to see if they would be willing to entertain a small amount of money toward putting that event together. So just to say that we do need to save some money aside, I think, for wages as we've done in the budget already, but we had said that we wanted to, you know, reserve whatever we might have left over. But I'm just conscious that we've only got two more meetings before this runs out and we need to have it programmed, so.
Chris?
I don't know.
I would just throw in there, based on Bradley's feedback, if there is an existing shortfall right now on the audits
Yeah.
that I don't want to, I would prefer not to wait for free cash to get certified, to move money to allow the audit to continue.
Right.
So I would rank that in probably one of the top five or 10 projects, just to square that away.
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with that. So there may be a couple of things like that. And I think we should still have, I did send a note out to Randall and Dan Holmes from Time Bond just to see if they think that they will get through that last portion of the culvert study in time because we have about another $25,000 that has to be requested as a reimbursement for that grant from the state. And so that turnaround again is very, very timely to be done. And Scott's going to be checking in terms of what it means, I think, from the state's perspective, because they keep changing some of their processes on this, but when they say they want all the ARPA money obligated, what does that mean? It's more than just our decision, obviously. We vote on it. I write it on my little tracking chart, but that didn't hold it. So it's got to be some level of a procurement something. So we need to just be very clear on that so that we get all that done in spite of all these crazy holidays that are coming up. Stephen?
Thank you for circulating the tracking spreadsheet. There was a calculation that was not identified in the right-hand margin and it calls for a set of over-under, you know, excess funds that might be reallocated. Plus it calls another random cell that's empty, G36.
Is this on Bradley's report maybe?
Whoever.
You're 32, you're 32.
It's a.
The ARPA funds, yes.
It's, it's a park line.
Okay.
And it was a formula created by the author. I don't know why they included G36, but it's an anomaly compared to all the other.
Well, maybe, yeah, I'll get with you, just be sure I understand which page that is because I'm, I'm probably part of the problem I'm at. As I'm trying to figure out how much money is left over because we know certain things that are finished and we know what some of the money is that we have, but sure.
Hard to beat this spreadsheet.
We will get back to that. So just to say that I think, Scott, if, if there are some things like the permitting software, whatever, let us try to put forth something on our December 10th meeting so that we at least talk about it. Whether we approve it or not is another story. Okay? All right.
Before you move on, I need to add something to my report that I forgot and it's important. There was a Chapter 61 application that came before our last planning board meeting, I mean, a select board meeting regarding Pomeroy Meadow Road. And it was signed off by Conservation Commission, it was signed off by Planning Board. And I said the board of assessors were not ready to sign off because I needed to do more research. And we discovered, because the landowner came directly to me and said that was never meant to be in Chapter 61. And we got the attorney that she hired to write a letter to correct. There was a mistake on the part of her realtor and the attorney that they thought it was in Chapter 61. Looked through all the paperwork. Nonetheless, it's been corrected, so that was never in chapter.
What's the address on?
I was trying to find it. I'm sorry.
It didn't formally get to select board yet. We heard it was.
Oh, yeah, you're right. We didn't, the select board didn't vote on it.
Right.
Because the others had not.
Right. It's the upper end of Pomeroy Meadow.
Sorry, yeah, it's the upper end, almost in East Hampton.
Okay, so it's a moot issue then.
It's a moot issue, yes.
Is it currently classified in the assessor's office as 61A?
No.
Okay.
It isn't.
No. So it was a mistake on their realtor's part? Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify, you will not see any more on that. It's resolved because it was never in 61.
All right. Okay, closeout of 24, I think we heard from Bradley. I don't know if we have any other questions on closeout of fiscal 24 or the audit of 23. We just have to double check in terms of that costing on that audit for.
Make sure that's not a rolling forward budget program.
Yeah, and just be sure what we have written down there. Yeah, okay. The railroad sewer study, Scott, I know you've included it for us here, but it's not for discussion here, is it? Or you're going to have a separate meeting with the sewer study committee? Is that right?
Yes, yeah, so that's going to be on the 5th and I also reached out to.
December 5th?
December 5th, KDAK, KP Logist to get some updated language for the changing the rail banking agreement. So I'm just waiting for that.
Okay, all right. And that'll be an in-person meeting or Zoom or, okay.
In person.
So that'll be a, a meeting that will be advertised if others are interested in hearing about it.
So just 50,000 feet, somebody who has not had the time to read through that report since Judy sent it, is it still looking favorable that we may be able to accomplish what we're looking at?
From an engineering standpoint, yes.
Okay.
From a cost point of view?
Well, that's, that's separate argument, but I'm just.
Engineering-wise, it looks.
It's not dead on arrival.
It's 40% of what I thought it was going to be. So. It's a big number, but it's not.
Sounds like we've got another donor coming through here.
I think from the engineering, just looking at it very, I just skimmed, it looked, you know, engineering-wise, it looked kind of interesting, but I sort of had a pause when I got to the, the price tag number. Yeah.
Well, I, you know, all of what we've been talking about tonight is how do you get a prudent return on your investment?
Yeah.
And is this a prudent way to invest in economic development
Yeah.
over the next 50 years? And it's not only to serve this newly acquired property, although that could be a big economic engine in itself, it really is to benefit 250 property owners in the area of town that's densely developed, aquifer protection and subject to, I mean, it's, it's long-developed. So old septic systems are not what you want to have to protect your water supply.
Yep. I'm sure we'll hear in greater detail when we have a meeting on the 5th, so that's, that's good. I'm glad that's scheduled at least. Land use planning update. So Stephen alluded to it a little bit. Do we have a contract in place?
So we did get, I got the contract from Ken Thursday or Friday last week, so I just had to take a quick look through it. It's a pretty standard contract and I'll send it to you to be signed.
Okay, perfect. All right, very good. Okay.
And schedule, Kepkoff?
Yes.
Yeah, right. Yep. Good. All right. Next thing up is holiday leave. So this came up, it's basically, holiday leave is not quite the right terminology here, in a way it is, but it's holiday office closing was the title of a draft select board policy that it was just been a draft for our consideration as we talked about. We had had our Zoom meeting and approved employees that we had identified that could be taking the half-day off on a day before Thanksgiving, Christmas and New Year's. And so this was trying to not have to do that and vote every year and do it at the last minute, but to try to put something in, in writing. So we do have a draft policy before you if anybody has any comments and thoughts.
So I did, I did read it and I, I come from the, if I put my HR hat on, if it's not written, then it's open to interpretation. I would suggest that we add language. Thanksgiving Eve is a fixed date, so that's not a problem. But the way I read it, it calls into question the what-if is Christmas falls on a Monday, Christmas Eve is on a Sunday, therefore do we get the half-day on Friday? Is it the business day before? It doesn't, it doesn't clarify. So I'm thinking when, when Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve falls on a business day, then it should be. But for example, when the holiday, Christmas Day, falls on a Sunday or even a Sunday, Christmas Eve, you're not getting the closest workday half. It's, it's meant to be, if it's actually Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve, we close early on those days if they're a business day.
Okay.
At least, that's my take.
Okay, what we said here, just to break it up. Whenever Christmas and New Year's fall on a weekday.
Yep.
Eligible employees may leave work at 12:00 PM, noon the day prior to that without taking personal time off or vacation leave.
So with that, and when Christmas falls on a Monday, the prior day for that for Town Hall, if you're not in the special group that gets a half-day on Friday, could be interpreted to mean that Thursday, which is now three days before the Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
But.
Okay. So what you would like to suggest is that if, if it falls, if those two holidays fall on a weekend day.
Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday?
Well, or just if the Eves, if Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve falls on a normal business day, that day shall be a half-day. So if Christmas Eve falls on a Saturday, you don't get the 22nd off as the half-day with the long weekend. Follow me?
Second.
So when Christmas and New Year's Eve fall on a business day.
Scott is pondering this.
You get the half-day.
I mean, just with Juneteenth, the last couple of years has always been like how we phrase things.
But Juneteenth.
I can see what you're saying. Yeah, that's a moving holiday as well, so.
Yeah. Should the Eve fall on a normal business day?
Right.
It shall be a half-day.
Right.
But if it falls on a weekend or if it falls on Friday, for example, Town Hall is closed on Friday with the exception of three employees. So therefore, if Christmas Eve falls on a Friday, you know, yes, the three employees that come in that day, it should only be a half-day, but their salary, they wouldn't be here anyways. I'm just saying, I want to be clear that it's not, at least my intention is not to back it up to the 23rd, 22nd, 21st
Right.
to create that half-day.
Okay. Scott and I'll take a look at it.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So, yes, I think so, yeah. So, yeah, if, if it, if it falls on a Sunday, does it mean that you get the half-day on Monday?
Well, Monday would be the holiday because it's the eve you're talking about.
Right. Monday's the holiday anyway. Right. Yep, correct.
It does go back to Friday or Thursday.
Okay. I think we can tweak that a little bit. Scott, you and I can work on that real quick.
Other than that, I thought it was well-written, short, three paragraphs.
Yeah.
No typos.
So we'll, we'll do that and then as usual, these select word policies, they could post it on the bulletin board for 10 days. So we'll work on it and see if we can get it tweaked out and I guess we'll probably have to bring it back to the meeting on the 10th on that. 250th anniversary, Scott, I don't know if you can show this up? Perfect. Thank you very much. So folks, those who maybe are still with us tonight, the 250th anniversary committee, loose as it is.
I'm not.
Please, please, give me a few more minutes. Has been trying to meet. We've had three meetings so far. We have another meeting on December 4th at 6:00 PM upstairs on the second floor. We've had about eight to 10 people come. Each meeting has been a different group, a couple of different people each time. But we've had various people from boards and committees that have shown interest come and present lots of ideas. So we've got ideas, we've got a priority list of what we want to do, what we might do and what we probably can't do. And then we've been trying to plug it onto a calendar to see what we can do to start off the year in January. So with that, we also talked about the idea of having some separate subcommittee that is really devoted to merchandising and both for fundraising. So this is a potential logo that has been volunteered to the committee, produced by Becky Nimmens, who's a part of the Southampton Historical Society. She is a graphic designer person, works in that field and took it upon herself to spend some time and just sketch out something that might be usable. In talking to her, this is obviously in black and white tonight, but the way she's done it, it is able to be as big or as little as we want it. So it could be something that could be a logo not only on publications, for example, but, or on our website, but also like on a smaller bit on a mug or on a T-shirt or she's made it so that it can be usable without much further ado. It is also possible to do in color if we decide what our town color is, colors, our, I don't know. And then just to note that she has the church in here. And then just to note that she has the church in here and the Sheldon's Ice Cream, the Old Mill area. She had obtained permission from both entities to use that on the front of this. And in between, you can see are some apples and pumpkins and whatever, just to sort of signify the agricultural part of town. So this is something that Becky has offered, free of charge. She's willing to continue working on this, but not unless the Select Board would approve it. In other words, if we don't approve it, she's fine. But if we do approve it, she would be willing to continue tweaking this a little bit if we wanted to, or to help us take it to the next step. That said, there have been a couple of other designs that had been brought to my attention that are more sketches than anything else. And honestly, at this point in time, I think it would take us a lot to probably go out and search for a real, another graphic designer, that wouldn't be Becky, I'm sure, to search for a graphic designer and have the funds to pay for that somebody to do that. And I think that is perhaps not the wisest way to go. So we did not open this out to anybody, this was totally volunteered. So I wanted to run it by Select Board tonight, just to get your reaction and see what you think about it, and whether this is something we want to pursue in terms of having a logo for the 250th anniversary. So, any comment or question, ideas, thoughts? Anybody?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, Becky did a beautiful job. It's catchy, it's big, I love the 250 in the size, and I think it's great. I have a little concern about two things. Neither of those structures are municipal buildings, and I just think that maybe we should have Municipal A municipal building there. A little concerned about, even though it's historic, the church, because that may not appeal to everyone in town.
It's one of the most historical buildings in town.
It is, it is. So I'm just throwing that out, I'm not saying no, I'm just pointing that out. And the second thing is, there's a lot of Southampton's in our country and in the world. And I just wonder if we could put an MA somehow, or would it really ruin it? Those are the two thoughts I had right away.
Okay, we could maybe throw in an MA in there somewhere? Good point, yep. Okay, anybody else?
So I go along with Cindy with the Massachusetts, whether it's MA or power, it might be on the back scroll, because for comparison, sitting right here, there's the town seal, right, which the church is on. And I don't know the house next to it, but I'm assuming it's probably.
That was the old Sheldon Academy?
You know, I think somebody on their own accord, who's a resident, came forward and put, you know, I think maybe a little feedback, because again, when, if you're not from here and you hear Southampton and you're in the region, you think of New York, Southampton, New York.
Exactly, yeah.
But other than that, I mean, I applaud her for the creativity and.
Yeah, me too.
You know, design. I'm more of a color person, but that's just me.
Yeah, well, and this can definitely be.
Oh, absolutely.
Put into full color, as she's called, or full color. So I guess the question is, do we have something that we consider our town colors? I know many towns do.
It's the webpage. The webpage, it's that maroon and hay.
The page is that kind of rusty color that is in the town seal up there, that building at the bottom, that kind of rust color is what we were trying to match when we did the webpage. So that is one color, but I don't know what else kind of goes with, if there were a two-color scenario, but.
I would suggest that maybe Becky looked to see about a color that complements or would naturally flow with the existing webpage.
Mm-hmm.
Right, because there's the color palette, and ultimately, that's where we would post it, right? So we don't want some neon yellow there.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And then, once it's approved, I think we should find money and order patches, and I think all the, for one year, all the police department uniforms, highway department uniforms, and fire department should have the patch on.
There we go.
You know, let's embrace it.
Yeah, okay.
Here.
Good, all right. Okay, any other comments or thoughts? All right, good, well, thank you.
I wish for all the comment about the church, it's everywhere.
It's quite everywhere.
And that's fine.
Okay, good. All right, well, thank you for the feedback. I will take that back to Becky, and should we, shall we take a formal vote on this, just to say that we like this, with maybe a couple modifications here and there? So that she knows that we are fully serious?
I move the Select Board support the design. I think, Becky.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. I will let her know that, thank you very much. All right, we need to take a quick look at our calendar for our next meetings before we go into these things, because, before we go to warrants, real quick, because our meeting is on the 10th and I believe on the 24th.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, you know.
That's not happening.
A, as a Catholic, I don't know about Christmas Eve, but B, as someone married to a first-generation Polish family that only celebrates Christmas Eve, I will not be here on the 24th.
Me either, because it's my birthday, so there you go. So I definitely won't be here.
Yeah. You want to get a lot of stuff passed, go for it that night.
Yeah, really. Do we want to try for the 17th, have it, you know?
Yes.
Uh, who, no, I can't do that, shoot, I'm not here, oh dear, I can't do that.
We need to have two meetings there.
Well.
In December. Because I'm, well, I say that, I don't, those generally aren't heavy on the budget.
No, they wouldn't be, although we need to probably, we need to chomp down on a couple of these contracts.
Yeah, we might need money for the salary.
Yeah, salary.
Compensation plan.
And any ARPA stuff, too.
Well, instead of 24, I mean, is there any desire to back up one night to the 23rd?
A Monday night would work for me more than anything, I mean, rather than the week before.
With the intent of trying to keep it light?
Yeah, no, it would be, just to do whatever necessary stuff we have to do.
Don't look at me.
What's anybody feel about Monday, the 23rd? Does that work for people's schedules or not?
It's okay with me.
Yep.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, my daughter's here. I will do it, I will get here if I can, but.
We're here with you, sitting in the audience.
I don't think that'll.
If we keep it, we'll try to make a really light meeting, we'll have, you know, whatever we need to do.
I'll do my best, I'll do my best to get here.
Otherwise, we could back it up to the 19th or something, but I, you know, I don't know that we'd be.
Are you proposing Zoom on the 23rd?
Well.
I was hoping to be.
You can do a Zoom maybe, on the 23rd?
Yeah.
And it's just going to be absolute.
Well, just pick the essential stuff that has to get done.
Essentials only, okay.
And I'm just thinking, you know, of course, my head's around to ARPA, but that's not the only essential thing, so.
I could do.
Let's aim for a Zoom on the 23rd, okay?
Let's do that.
All right, very good, thank you on that. All right, if there's no other business that can't wait, Stephen, would you like to pick up our famous warrant read?
Oh, I would just double-check that first dollar amount.
Yeah, so I'm going to omit reading the first line and let you in on all the rest. I don't know how to reconcile the decimal place in that number, and therefore, I suspect it's an error, and I don't want to perpetuate the error. So, no further ado, the reading for today is P25-16. The amount is $345,558.93. Next one is PD25-16. The amount, $56,877.32. PD25-16A, in the amount of $244,602.56. W25-17, the amount is $475,165.16. P25-18, the amount is $344,994.35. W25-19, the amount is $1,783,860.68. Lastly, PD25-20, $58,454.13.
Very good, and I do have the cover sheet for the warrant that you omitted there temporarily.
W25-11A, in the amount is?
Thirty-six, so $3,692.16.
Yeah, I wouldn't have gotten that.
You wouldn't have gotten that one.
All right, very good. All right, we have.
Failed word.
Two sets of minutes to approve, I'd like to just take them separately, because I know there's a little error on one of them, so.
Motion to approve October 29, 2024 minutes.
Second. All right, this is the one that has a little issue, and that's on the purpose for the public hearing, as we talked about tonight, because it says, "Requesting permission to erect a line of poles," which is not correct. And in parentheses, it had, "Install underground conduit and cable," so.
That's why their damn printed material read straight from ever so.
Yeah, so anyway, but it should just be, "Install underground conduit and cable," I believe.
That's who should.
So that should be just one correction, that's the only thing I saw there. So with that correction, if nobody else saw anything else, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
I wasn't present.
Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes of November 12.
November 12.